Good evening, everybody. The appointed hour has arrived. In accordance with MGL Chapter 38, Section 20, I am inquiring whether anyone is recording this meeting and if so, to please make your presence known. Not seeing any takers. We'll ask for roll call, please.
Counselors. Bloom.
Here.
Burdick.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
Crowe.
Here.
Leveque.
Here.
Ludkey.
Here.
Mendez.
Here.
Neary.
Schnep.
Here.
Starr.
Here.
Tam Ash.
Here.
Turkelson.
Thank you. 11. Oh, excuse me. 12. 12 here.
You're excused, Janet. It's fine. All right. Next, we have Pledge of Allegiance. Counsel Leveque.
Thank you. Thank you, President Penn. So in peeping with the -- what we've been doing for the last calendar year, for every meeting, we have a veteran, Barnstable veteran, come and do the Pledge of Allegiance. So just before we all stand, just to make this introduction, Barnstable resident and retired Senior Master Sergeant Guy Gachok. Guy served his country for 37 honorable years, which included four years of active duty in the U.S. Marine Corps, ORA, where he participated in various deployments in 33 years in the U.S. Air Force and Air National Guard. He retired in 2021 from the 102nd Intelligence Wing at Otis Air National Guard Base. He now continues his life of service by assisting veterans as a Veteran Service Officer for the Barnstable Veterans District. So without further ado, please, we all rise.
Thank you. Thank you. Could I ask everyone to face the colors, please, and join me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Guy.
Thank you, man. Thank you all for having me.
Thank you. And we'll remain standing, please, for a moment of silence. There's going to be a little bit diversion of the agenda here where I'm going to call on the chief to please come. I understand she wanted to make some comments regarding yesterday's events, and so we'd like to accommodate her. And we're so appreciative that she is here this evening with us to share her information. Just make sure the green light's on, okay?
It's on.
Good.
Thank you, Madam President and council members. I wanted to introduce Lieutenant Michael Riley to the council. So Lieutenant Riley, could you come up? And I just wanted to speak briefly about the incident yesterday that took place on St. Francis Circle. Lieutenant Riley is the commander of the Cape Cod Regional SWAT team and was in charge of the scene at the incident on St. Francis Circle yesterday. As some background, this incident started out as a domestic disturbance, and the initial responding patrol officers were able to get the victim and other occupants out of the house through a window. The situation quickly evolved into a barricade as the subject refused to come out of the house, and when the SWAT resources arrived, Lieutenant Riley took command of the scene. He demonstrated tremendous leadership and patience as he absorbed information from his SWAT operators on the perimeter, from team members operating robots that were equipped with cameras, from the negotiators, and also from the drones overhead. He managed resources not only from Cape Cod Regional SWAT, but also from the Mass State Police, Barnstable County Sheriff's Office, and the Metro SWAT Team, and I'm probably forgetting some of the other resources that were there. He made sure that we utilized our clinician to access her skill set as well. His ability to calmly process the information and make sound decisions while there were shots being fired at his personnel was exemplary. He communicated everything clearly and confidently, keeping everyone informed. He was the hub of the wheel, and he made everything work yesterday. The SWAT operators and the other officers on scene were able to do a great job because of his leadership. And I don't want to overlook the fact that there were a lot of other people who helped out yesterday, and I know Lieutenant Riley will be quick to credit them as well. Many of the officers who were on scene who weren't SWAT operators left details, they came directly from court, they left trainings, or they self-deployed from home to respond to this incident. The people behind the scenes at the station deserve credit. Our dispatchers were amazing, trying to keep calm in the chaos. We had supervisors who stayed behind at the station to make sure that everything ran smoothly there and that we were still able to maintain our calls that were going on in the remainder of the town. And our mechanics, who got our entire fleet out there on the road, were phenomenal yesterday because we had some cars that probably hadn't seen the road in a little while. But it was really a team effort, and I think the community should be proud of the men and women of the BPD as a whole. But really, this incident and the successful outcome were probably -- I might get choked up, but I really truly believe that they were spearheaded by Lieutenant Riley's leadership, his patience, his poise. He's got a tremendous amount of experience on the SWAT team, and all those SWAT operators looked to him to keep everything calm, and he did it, and it was phenomenal. So I just wanted to make sure that he got recognized for his.
Three cheers. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you so much for introducing him to us. Would you like to say a few words?
I would. I wasn't expecting that, Chief, so thank you.
Thank you.
And I will say that it was a challenging situation, and while the chief described it as me leading the crew, it was incredibly easy to do that because we have such a phenomenal police department, we have such a phenomenal group of people that work on our SWAT team as well as the other resources, and, most importantly, the support of the chief, the support of this council, the support of the town, the support of the town manager, and the support of the people that live in this town. We feel that every day, and we do appreciate the fact that we get your support, and it makes it really easy to do our job. So thank you for that, and Chief, thank you for tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you. What a wonderful way to start the meeting. Thank you so much. Okay, moment of silence. We did that already. Public comment, I'm so sorry.
Signed in.
Please, when you -- just generally for people, you'll have three minutes to speak. Make sure we know your name and where you live, and please sign the sheet. Thank you.
President Penn, counselors, my name is Suzanne Conley, and I live in Barnstable in the village of Osterville. Last Thursday during the special town meeting, we heard Mr. Santos' opinion that citizens' concerns about dielectric fluid on top of our aquifer are unfounded, and we also heard the insinuation that our concerns emanate from unreliable sources on the Internet. Let's set aside the rather insulting assumption that I, my group, and others cannot tell the web's wheat from the chaff. Let's look at some facts. These come from the documents I shared with the council in recent days and from experts who testified before the EFSB on the Independence Drive substation for Vineyard Wind and about the dielectric fluid plans for use there. Three key takeaways. First, dielectric fluid is not simply oil. It contains water-soluble compounds such as benzyltoluene and dibenzyltoluene. The latter has strong absorption and high-mobility propensity in soil. Mitigation is much more than wiping it up. Second, a material safety data sheet written for these toxic compounds reads, quote, "Do not allow product to reach groundwater. Prevent material from entering storm sewers, ditches, or drains that lead to waterways. Do not allow contact with soil, surface, or groundwater. Prevent leaks and prevent soil or water pollution caused by leaks. Do not release into the environment," end quote. Third, Anne Marie Patrica, a geoscientist with expertise in the protection of groundwater, described four scenarios -- this is important -- outside of normal substation operation that must be considered, all of which could lead to contamination of groundwater. One, a catastrophic explosion of a transformer resulting in projectile distribution of dielectric fluids beyond the borders of the containment system. Two, a transformer fire which could result in the failure of critical components of the proposed petro-barrier. Three, a greater-than-50-year precipitation event, two of which have occurred here on the Cape recently, during which rainfall would actually exceed the capacity of a typical containment system, leading to overflow. And four, transportation accidents related to the movement, delivery, and pump-out of hundreds of thousands of gallons of dielectric fluid at substations, accidents that would happen outside of containment systems. Let me leave you with this. Years ago, people were unaware that firefighting foam and de-icing fluid at the airport posed great danger to our drinking water. We did not know then what we know now. Why should we, as a community, just accept compounding the chances of environmental disaster with two more substations in Barnstable when better options exist? What we heard last week should not be taken as gospel. When difference of opinion exists on a matter such as this, shouldn't we err on the side of caution and say no? Finally, please understand that our group's concerns are many. At the top of the list, though, along with human health and safety, is the drinking water that allows us all to live and work here. Please continue to question these projects. We will continue to oppose them at every turn. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Gary Peters, resident of Barnstable. I'm actually going to shorten up my comments a bit because Suzanne stole some of my thunder. But as you just heard, many of us were disappointed at last week's special town council meeting since this did not include any responses from the council to questions from the public, despite the best efforts of our counselors to set the agenda to provide for that. That presentation was in complete contradiction to testimony provided to the EFSB by Anne Marie Patrica on August 27, 2018. Ms. Patrica is a professional geologist and an expert in siting and permitting of public water supplies and is very knowledgeable about the Cape Cod water system. She testified on behalf of the town of Barnstable emphasizing the risks of the dielectric fluids. I'd like to just briefly add a few details of her report. Ms. Patrica began by pointing out that dielectric fluids contain not just mineral oils but additional highly-toxic substances, some of which have, quote, "strong absorption mobility," unquote, in the soil. This means that they would not necessarily remain at the surface after a spill, contrary to last week's report. The math is also very worrisome. The maximum allowable concentration of these substances in drinking water is one part per 5 million, which means that a 20-gallon spill into the aquifer would make 100 million gallons of water undrinkable. In light of the hundreds of thousands of gallons of dielectric fluids that the substations would contain, even if the containment system proposed by the developer captured 99.99% of the fluids, the result would be catastrophic. In other words, containment would need to be perfect. Ms. Patrica then went on to point out that there are several potential scenarios in which containment would not be adequate. A fire or explosion at a substation could result in, quote, "projectile distribution of fluids beyond the perimeter of the containment system and reach the groundwater." One week after her testimony on September 5, 2018, Mr. Hans Keizer, supervisor of the Hyannis Water Supply, also appeared before EFSB and essentially agreed with and supported Ms. Patrica's findings. Both of these expert analyses were totally dismissed at last week's DPW presentation. It is imperative that the town leadership recognize these discrepancies and base future decision on the facts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, wind or not. My name is Larry Moore, and I live in Kootenai, and I am here tonight for -- at Gary's request, not here tonight, but following up on Gary's request. He was afraid he'd go over on his time, and he asked me to finish the end of his message, and I'm honored to do that. So the question for all of us as a community, and especially for the 13 of you and Janet as well, where do we go from here? So since it's been six years almost since the EFSB's testimonies had been received by Anne Marie Patrica, there's a request for an updated review of her analysis concerning the exact specifications and composition of dielectric fluids that the developer plans to use, information which may not have been revealed up to now. Contrary to the misinformation provided previously, as pointed out by Cliff Carroll, and he's right behind me, so he'll be adding to it, I'm sure, the remainder of her previous study would likely remain unchanged, since the water system and structure of the aquifer have not changed during this time period. So it is our understanding and request that the next special town council meeting addressing water resources is tentatively scheduled for mid-April, I think it's April 11, but whenever it is scheduled. Despite the challenge of finding time that is convenient for all involved, we urge the council to make this happen as soon as possible. Now, one more thing that's on the humor side. Yesterday, in preparation for today, Charlie Bloom and I were texting each other about what was going to happen and what was going on, and we both said, "Where are you?" And I said first, "Where are you?", and he said, "I'm at the -- I'm getting a stress test." And so I said, "So am I." We were at the same cardiologist's office, and we were going back and forth, entertaining the staff at Dr. Hatfield's office. We had a good time. We came out healthy. We survived. We're here tonight to keep pressuring you and chiding you and having a good time. So thanks a lot, and I'll see you the next time.
Thanks, Larry.
It's a small rock, isn't it?
I'm going to need a stress test, I think, if I have to keep coming here. Last week's special hearing was well-meant, but unfortunately, it didn't unfold the way that it was kind of presented to us. A lot of people wrote questions in. None of them were answered. Mr. Santos pretty much blocked almost the entire time, and Larry just asked a good question, what's changed? And the answer is nothing has changed, except for some certain opinions. I think that was pretty much a disservice to the town. I'm going to get very quick here. A lot of information also was just shared with everybody. There's been a data safety sheet sent around by Avengrid's representative. I received it from the town attorney. When you look up and you actually take the time to call the manufacturer of that, and you call the company that supplies it, and if you look closely at it, it was the Neogen one. This is what it is actually used for. It's an animal laxative. Neogen doesn't even make transformer oil. For everybody out in the crowd, it's an enema for horses that get colic. It's not even used in transformers, and it's been being shared around this town as something we're supposed to be depending on, you know, protecting our water. This is an actual data safety sheet for a transformer substation off Hornsrev, Denmark. It's called Nitrous X10. This is completely contaminated. The warnings talk about going into water systems, talks about being explosive. It talks about the risk, cancerous risks. It's 39 pages long. I don't think that our head of DEP or our attorneys have taken the time to look into what these people are bringing into our town. In addition to that, in the spill prevention plan that I was given, which I was told was the updated spill prevention plan for Independence Park, which is now operating and filled with fluids, in their own construction spill prevention plan, which I was given allegedly as an up-to-date one, it says the final substation spill prevention response plan will be implemented after equipment has been installed and once it has been filled with fluids. That's happened. We don't have the plan. We don't have it in our hands. This is what wasn't even discussed last week's meeting. We weren't allowed to ask questions about the fire. One of the town counselors asked about fire. He was told this meeting's not about fire. You cannot talk about the water supply and the danger to it without talking about what happens when one of these transformers catches on fire and burns for three days. I keep trying to get a video up here, but we're not allowed to upload video to the public, so I guess this is the next best thing for the public out there. This is Sydney, Australia. This is a transformer that caught on fire. It burned for three days. It's also about a quarter of the size of what they're putting in Independence Park.
Cliff, that's three minutes, if you could finish up, please.
I will finish instantly. This is Wequacket Lake. This is Knights Inn. That's 125,000 gallons transformer oil. This is the Oak Street Transformer Substation, 70,000 gallons transformer oil. This checkered is our well-protection zones. This is the fire tower on the side of the Mid-Cape Highway. This is land that the town has spent years accumulating to protect our watershed, with the well over here projected for 5 million gallons per day. This is the size of the Kmart shopping plaza. It's 28 acres of land. They haven't provided a design. They haven't given us the engineering for it. They haven't told us how much oil is in it, yet the head of our DEP told the town, "Don't worry about it, folks. There's no problem. It's mineral oil. I guess horses can drink it, but believe me, that is not the manufacturer of what's sitting in, like, waiting for a bomb in addition to the SF6 gas, which is deadly to our firefighters." Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's just plain wrong that it's gotten this far.
Good evening, counselors. I, for one, have confidence in the expertise and experience of our Mr. Santos, and I would like to acknowledge his tutorial on Cape Cod's groundwater and, by association, thank the town council for bringing fact-based learning to bear on groundwater concerns raised by the opponents to the expansion of substations. I actually used the Groundwater 101 video in my class today. I trust this concern that's been addressed by the town is relating to groundwater contamination from dielectric oil spills has been laid to rest, not to worry. What is the chance of an exploding projectile amount of fluid leaving that containment area? I'd like to know the percentage of that, if it's brought up as something we should worry about. Secondly, I am a professional educator. What I researched and would like to share with you all this evening is another unfounded concern, that residential electric bills would greatly increase on Cape Cod. I think the figure of three times higher was mentioned due to the siting and hookup of these offshore wind projects. All residential electricity in my zip code, and I think all of Cape Cod, must have 62% from coming from renewable sources. This is a statewide commitment to a cleaner electricity initiated in 1999, I think, through the 193rd General Court of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts General Laws, Part 1, Title 2, Chapter 25A, Section 11F, titled Renewable Energy Portfolio Standard for Retail Electricity Suppliers. So all of us already have 62% of our electricity that we're buying from renewable resources. What about your electric bill? Well, each of your electric bills incorporates a consumer charge, a fixed cost per customer at $10, delivery charges, fixed rates per kilowatt-hour regardless of the supplier, and then a charge for the kilowatt-hours that you use from your chosen supplier, which is about 50% of your total bill. There are dozens of suppliers that you, as a consumer, can choose from, and the advertised price per kilowatt-hour ranges from $11 to $0.20 per kilowatt-hour. For example, Cape Light Compact has a full 100% renewable energy option that is provided by at least 38% wind. Its web-listed retail price is $0.15 per kilowatt-hour, well within the range of supplier rates that are not necessarily from 100% renewable sources. So a current supplier of wind energy electricity is not showing a significant increase in cost. But please realize, the actual cost of the supplied electricity is only a portion, roughly 50%, of your monthly bill. So a 100% renewable wind option at a 50% higher cost per kilowatt-hour would result in electric bill only 25% greater. Finally, you, as a consumer, can choose your supplier. So if you do not want to purchase wind power, you don't have to. I hope this puts to rest the concern that this would bring much higher costs to all of us as electricity consumers. Thank you for the time and allowing me that few seconds more.
Thank you.
Good evening. Toby Leary, I'm a business owner here. I live in West Barnstable. I'm a business owner in the town of Barnstable, and I ran for town council last fall. I was beat fair and square by Chris Clark, and not here to rehash all of that, but I will say there's one thing that I heard when I was running, and that was several people came to me and said, you know, they were concerned about the towns, you know, they made it sound like there was some sort of backdoor dealing going on or secret handshakes in the hallway and certain meetings that were secret and under the cover of darkness, so to speak. And I confronted several town counselors about this, and I left feeling like this was not the truth or not the fact of the matter of what was actually going on. And so this past week, I received a letter that was extremely concerning to me. It starts off with a big confidential heading at the top of the page, and then it talks about exciting news that there's change, of course, coming, and it's underway, and there's strategic priorities. There's this whole mandate that's been outlined, bullet-pointed, and it even talks about it takes aim at builders and developers. Of course, I'm a builder, so I take a little bit of offense to that. Have no exclusive privileges in town, which I would agree, but we have zoning laws, and we have right of the zone, and we have certain things that have been established over the course of time for those of us who do build in town or build for a living to be able to follow. And so this seems like it's starting to take aim at the very procedures that are in place. And then at one point, it became very alarming to me when I read, "Along with appropriate partners." There's this whole subcommittee thing that's going to be talked about and that's mandated and talked about in this letter. And, you know, "along with appropriate partners" sounds very exclusive or handpicked, as if, you know, "You think the way we think, then you'll be able to sit on one of these committees and be able to shape and recommend to the town the direction that this should go." And I tell you one thing, for somebody who heard firsthand of people having sort of this arrangement or backdoor deals behind closed doors, and then to see the new direction that the town is taking, I would ask the town counselors here tonight, if you know about this and this is the direction that things are heading, you're certainly not instilling confidence in the citizens of the town who feel like they were promised an open and transparent process. And so I would just -- that's really all I have to say. And also, as I mentioned, I'm a business owner, and finding help and retaining help is a constant challenge that we have. I'm also a father. My three children are basically going to be banished from the island and the place I love the most here at Cape Cod because of the cost of living in this town. And I think the direction that this mandate takes is basically we're full, you know, seek shelter elsewhere because you're not going to be able to afford to live here if we implement all of the things that we want to see put. I'm sorry, you know, we all love Cape Cod for different reasons. We all live here for different reasons.
Toby, that's three minutes, if you could finish up.
But I believe putting the genie in the bottle and trying to turn back time is not going to happen, and so thank you very much.
Good evening, counselors. Petey Hanson, Oster resident and Calm Water Commissioner. Our responsibility as water commissioners includes ensuring safe drinking water, managing water systems, public communication and transparency, adherence to local bylaws and regulations, and coordination with other municipal boards and agencies. You all know my ongoing concerns with the proposed massive substations that are going to be located over our salt-sour aquifer. In my opinion, these substations represent a major risk to our drinking water, and I respectfully disagree with the conclusions as to the contents of this dielectric fluid that Dan Santos presented to the council last week. That data I continue to analyze points to a much different conclusion of this fluid, that it contains toxic elements that are in fact harmful if they were to enter the groundwater. This has been documented in several reports that were given to the town of Barnstable in 2008. in 2008. Susan Conley and Dr. Peters referred to that tonight. In my opinion, the threat to our sole source aquifer from the construction of these substations remains a very strong, not only for the potential of thousands of gallons of dielectric fluid leaking, but to the threat of a fire and subsequent explosions, as Cliff mentioned earlier. An Evans Source spokesman at one of the information sessions last fall replied to a question about how the potential fire would be handled. His response was it would be left to burn out. Our local fire departments have indicated they would be able to respond to the call, but only in a way that would secure the area. They are not equipped to put out a massive electrical fire. The burning of an electrical substation would cause the release of poisonous toxins and smoke into the ground and the air. This is a fact. Questions that came up, where's the emergency spill plan? Where's the containment plan? Where's the fire plan? And is there a plan to shut down the wells if this should happen? I would recommend an invitation to our fire chiefs to attend one of the upcoming meetings to give their expertise on how they would handle a massive substation fire. Just a reminder to some of us that we might have forgotten, East Palestine did not plan on being, there being an environmental disaster near town that will have implications on the health of these citizens for years to come. Flint, Michigan didn't plan on their water system to be polluted. The Barnstable Fire Academy did not plan on the firefighting foam with PFAS leaching into the surrounding well and the million-dollar-plus being spent to clean up this mess. Cape Cod Potato Chips did not plan on spilling the 30 gallons of cleaning fluid that would travel underground and contaminate two active wells for over three years. Otis Air Force Base did not plan to dump all their fuel and toxic fluids into pits that traveled underground to form plumes that continue to impact our water source. Last item I would like to discuss is sulfuric hexafluoride or S F six. It's 25,000 times more potent as greenhouse gas than CO2. It is dangerously unstable and can escape containment because of lightning strikes corrosion or human error. It is used to cool transformers and S F six is part of Emmergrais' construction and operating plans. You won't see this in their glossy brochure. In summary, the comments that you are hearing tonight should be taken very seriously. In my opinion, we have only one chance to get this right. Think about the consequences if we don't. I'd also like to, if we could get a data sheet on the dielectric fluid from the actual manufacturer, I think that would be helpful. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I live in Marston's Mills, and I would echo some of Toby's comments tonight. What was interesting about those is the same things that he had mentioned, the appropriate partners. Who decides that? Many of the people that are on this council ran on transparency and on impartiality. The impartiality comment is great because our current town council president has a "We're Full" sticker on the back of her car. What? So people who are struggling for housing right now, where are we supposed to go? What leadership are we supposed to look to? Because it's not here. This letter, why was it confidential? There's nothing on this letter that anybody who knows you doesn't think that you ran on. It's well-known that many of the councilors-
Could you please identify for us where you got the letter?
I got that from a friend.
That's not good enough identification.
I'm happy to share it with you, but I think you already have a copy of it. And I also take umbrage at the fact that you're asking me for a copy of that. You shared it, and Toby mentioned it, so-
I was going to ask him, but he walked away.
Oh, well-
And then he left the room.
It's very transparent of you to share that. But anyway, the "We're Full" stickers come from people that have multiple homes, a number of them. We're fighting for a home, a single home, one that would ideally cost less than $3,000 a month to rent. Where are these subcommittees coming from? We have a local comprehensive plan. We have a housing committee. The housing committee especially should be reestablished. Of all the committees we have, that one should be of the utmost importance. When I was on it, it didn't do anything. We made recommendations, and we were lucky to make a recommendation because it took so long to do anything at all. That housing committee should be revamped with specific tasks and timelines. There should be goals. There's no point in having any of these committees without goals, without actual recommendations coming from them. There hasn't been a housing committee meeting in a year, maybe more. Of all the committees and things that we're focusing on, we're still focusing on creating more committees because this sounds a lot like the zoning task force that was rejected. And if this is what's coming from town council leadership, builders and developers haven't had exclusivity. If they did, we'd have more housing. People come to town council and fight housing all the time. We see it constantly. Our own town council members fight housing constantly and are part of legal nonprofit organizations to fight housing. So the fact that this letter is coming out and attacking builders and developers, attacking the B I D, and that you want to mandate retail shops, that doesn't work. I don't know if you've looked at retail recently, but brick and mortar isn't necessarily succeeding like we would want it to. I desperately want to shop locally. Most of the things that I can buy, yes, I can find locally, but it's a real hard push to do that.
Three minutes if you could finish up, please.
So I would be careful about mandating retail and top-of-shop things because when you mandate, you lose options. And you're also telling private property owners what to do with the property. Thank you.
I'm Eileen Elias, and I reside in West Barnstable. Thank you to President Felicia Penn and members of the town council for forming a council-based affordable housing subcommittee based on whatever has been the history and on testimony that was provided approximately two months ago. Also appreciation to Councilwoman Paula Schneck for her role with this subcommittee. The Barnstable No Place for Hate, which I chair with its partners, is advocating for affordable housing that benefit the lives of all people throughout Barnstable, not just in Hyannis. We are seeking information on this subcommittee and its implementation, including who will be its participants, its chairperson, expected goal, objectives, and timeframe, start date, and reporting expectations. It's consistent with some of what was just given as testimony. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Sandy Jones. I am speaking tonight to bring another perspective to last week's meeting. And I'm just going to state that what I'm going to read is basically public comments that were made by town of Barnstable officials. And so that's why I think after the meeting last week, it was confusing. In 2018 Vineyard Wind Project, attorney Charlie McLaughlin was quoted in the Barnstable Patriot as saying, "The chemical components appear to present a real threat to us. We are concerned that a spill could leach into the groundwater 50 feet below the surface. In fact, one gallon of dielectric fluid released in 5 million parts water would pollute 5 million gallons of water in seven days." Hans from the Hyannis Water District, he was asked to the Energy Facility Siting Board about the location of the Independence Park substation. And he said, "If there was a release of dielectric fluids to the groundwater, it would flow downstream as little as seven days. A loss of one well would be catastrophic. The allowable amount of dielectric fluid in a public water is so tiny that a shutdown of the Mary Dun Wells would be quick to follow. I prefer substations not to be built in the town of Barnstable. The risk to underground water is too great." Director Dan Santos said that he had read his testimony and adopted Hans's testimony. Back in November at the Energy Facility Siting Board, the Mid-Cape Reliability Project, which is the interconnection from Park City Wind, Charlie McLaughlin spoke again, and he said, "What we don't know, we don't know the ability is to mitigate a leak if and when it occurs. The Cape Cod chip janitor released eight gallons of clean insolvent and shut down multiple wells for multiple years. We cannot risk the type of impact to any of our wellheads because we are operating at max capacity as of last summer. We need the company to provide evidence on what there is by way of byproducts and what these risks of these byproducts pose." And then the application for intervenor status for the Cape Reliability Project, the petition reads, "The town protects the natural resources within the town, including the sole source aquifer, from which the town provides drinking water to its inhabitants, and the potential for any impact to the town's groundwater resources is of significant concern to the town's interests. The current project change notice submission does not describe in detail safety and containment systems for the design, construction, and monitoring of the substation." In closing, he said, "The town seeks to fully explore the subject matters and will protect the town's interest in public safety and its groundwater resources for the public drinking water supplies." In January, Councilor Levesque asked, "How many substations does the town of Barnstable have, and dielectric fuels, dielectric fluids have always existed?" Town Manager Ells responded, "Two major substations, Oak Street and Independence Park. Dielectric fuels, fluids are a concern whether it be 10 gallons or 10,000 gallons, a small-
That's three minutes if you could finish up, please.
-a small amount of dielectric fuel would be detrimental." And lastly, I'll just leave it at this. It was a memorandum after the substation plans were submitted to engineering, and Griffin Bowden wanted to know, he wanted to see the S P C C, the containment, and also he wanted to see the M S C S sheets for the fluids, specifically dielectric fuel and fluid in the substation, and requested monitoring wells. So I can't imagine we would go through all this if it's really just mineral water and would sit on top of the surface. So that. Thank you very much for letting me speak.
Thank you.
My name is Dylan Moreno. I live in Catuette. I come today to present my response to some of the concerns presented by the citizens of Barnstable to offshore wind cables coming ashore. I also intend to address other concerns regarding the extent to which wind energy and renewable energy in general can effectively support both our climate and our economy. Firstly, referring to D P W Director George Santos's recent video on groundwater, which I very enjoyed, he stresses that fertilizer runoff and PFAS currently pose a much greater threat to the purity of our aquifers, estuaries, and oceans than any of the risks that we see can come from these substations and any oil leaks. To me, however, there is a much larger issue. The burning of fossil fuels directly damages our oceans through acid deposition and ocean acidification. This poses a much greater threat than any potential risks from wind energy, as according to the National Oceanographic and Atmospheric Association, acidification breaks down the shells and mollusks populations and deteriorates the coral reefs, which are vital to ecosystem equilibrium and local biodiversity. This is why it is so ever-important to attack the effects of climate change at the sources. Increasing renewable energy sources will allow for the phasing out of these fossil fuels, which pose far greater threats to our oceans. Additionally, the United Nations says that renewable energy can be one of the cheapest sources of energy out there. Not only does it provide many more jobs for our local and national communities, but renewable energy in all is clean as opposed to fossil fuels. I want to stress that as demand increases for wind energy, over time, the costs will lower significantly, becoming comparably or even beating out fossil fuel energy costs in the present day. I also want to condone Governor Healy's recent remarks on the development of wind energy, where she addresses her, quote, "concern about some of the misinformation campaigns," unquote, she has seen in this movement. This change will be difficult, but is it not the same with any paradigm shift? Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
President Penn, council members. My name is Barry Scheingold. I'm a resident of Marston's Mills. I serve as Chair on the town's Infrastructure and Energy Committee, but I'm speaking here for myself. So last week, we listened to Don Santos, D P W Director, who stated that dielectric fluid, basically mineral oil, used in the Vineyard Wind Substation is not of major concern. Even if there was a spill that was not contained, a very low probability event, because of the viscous quality of the fluid, there would be time to remove it before it could seep into the groundwater. Another protective feature is its insolubility. It doesn't mix well with water. Now, I want to speak to the reference that a number of my fellow townspeople have made regarding the testimony in the Vineyard Wind proceeding before the Energy Facility Siting Board in 2018. What they do not mention, which I think is critical to understand the context, the town had witnesses who put in testimony. Then Vineyard Wind provided rebuttal testimony. They do not mention this. The rebuttal testimony is generally more consistent with what Mr. Santos had said in terms of the qualities of dielectric fluid and the extreme remote possibility of damage to the groundwater from it. There was also discovery that Vineyard Wind posed to the town's witnesses. Subsequently, Vineyard Wind and the town entered into the host community agreement, basically a settlement agreement. And a key part of that was Vineyard Wind agreed to use more strict containment measures than they had before. And another critical factor, again not mentioned, is the testimony of both the town and Vineyard Wind's witnesses was withdrawn. It never became part of the record of the Vineyard Wind proceeding. My own experience, I've been an expert witness a number of times, in my experience, it's uncommon to totally withdraw the testimony. So to rely on this testimony that was withdrawn and not to mention the opposing testimony, I think is somewhat misleading. So I just wanted to present that to you so you understand that. I'm not really going to speak about the substance of the issue, but to say, I think that if we're talking about the dielectric fluid, you know, what's in it, what Park City Wind's intentions are for that project, I think the best thing to do is to ask them to appear before the town council. I like the idea that there may be further hearings. I thought it was valuable what you did last time because they would probably have the best information about what their plans are, and they certainly have their own experts.
That's three minutes if you could finish up, please.
I have, thank you.
Thanks.
I'm learning how to speak in three minutes. I'm used to writing long reports.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Joanne O'Connor. I'm from Centerville. Earlier today, I sent councilors and the town manager and Director Santos a decision that the Cape Cod Commission made in 2012 on the New Generation Wind Project. It's daunting. It's 58 pages. I will tell you the most important thing for you to look at in regard to our water resources are pages eight through 15. Couple of the points that were made in the water resource findings. Number four, the commission finds that regional policy plan water resources goal number two is to maintain the overall quality and quantity of Cape Cod's groundwater to ensure a sustainable supply of untreated, high-quality drinking water. Water resources finding number nine, the 2009 regional policy plan definition of hazardous material is any chemical or substance that, when released into the environment, will pose a significant containment threat to groundwater and drinking water supplies, including petroleum products, petroleum distillates, organic and inorganic solvents, oil-based paints, oil-based stains, insecticides, herbicides, rodenticides, and pesticides. Hazardous materials do not include hazardous waste, articles, consumer products- Hazardous materials do not include hazardous waste, articles, consumer products, cosmetics." And the Water Resource Finding Number Eighteen, in regard to the comments made of vegetable-based oils, mineral oils, the Commission finds that 1.5% of the vegetable oil-based transformer fluid is a hazardous material pursuant to the Regional Policy Plan definition, in that if released, it will pose a significant contaminant threat to groundwater and drinking water supplies. Now, we have, speaking to questions that other folks have had with the fact that we don't have any information in regard to containment plans, we have been asking the town manager for this information for months. Barnstable Speaks is who I'm speaking for, and we're told that information is not available. He also tells us that he works for you. So would you please ask the town manager to find this information for us, because we cannot rely on Vineyard Wind or Avangrid to supply this information? Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening. My name is Joseph O'Brien. I'm a resident, lifelong resident of Centerville. I'd like to speak regarding some of the facts or things that have been spoken about, Vineyard Wind Project in specific. In the past, I have been a member of the Barnstable Recreation Commission for 40 years and just retired basically two years ago. Two years ago, the same year that I accepted a position to work on the Vineyard Wind Project as their safety manager. So I've been involved in the Vineyard Wind Project for over two and a half years. When I first was looking at the position and the possibility of taking or accepting it, I was the sitting chairman of the Barnstable Recreation Commission. And so the fact that, you know, Coldwell's Beach was going to be the site to bring the offshore cable onshore concerned me. I wanted to be sure, as the chairman of the Recreation Commission, I'm sure you can all understand the fact that, over the period of being on the Rec Commission, really concerned about our beaches. Every year, we were talking about how we were going to better our beaches and clean them up and, you know, what have you, staff them with lifeguards and, you know, the whole nine yards. So this certainly was something that concerned me. So I did my research, not only with Avangrid and other European companies or whatever that have built offshore substations, but, you know, experts in the field. And I, after a month of, you know, doing a lot of research, I felt comfortable with the fact that these projects are safe projects. They do things the right way. They do the due diligence. They plan. They make sure. They look at hazards, just like myself as a safety professional, look at hazards and look at ways to mitigate those hazards. So I felt comfortable accepting the position, and for the past two and a half years of working on the project, it has just enhanced my feeling that these projects are safe. They do things the right way. They plan out their work. I can tell you, now in the final phase of the project, working pretty much every day...
That's three minutes, if you could finish up, please.
Excuse me?
That's three minutes, if you could finish up, please.
Okay. So I can tell you, working day in and day out over at the substation in Independence Park, I just witnessed one of the transformers being replenished with mineral oil today. That's what goes into the transformers over there. Fact of the matter is that it's nice to hear some of the previous speakers at least talk about the containment pits that are there. Containment pits with the capacity of 110% of the oil that's in the transformer. So the chances of the oil getting into the groundwater are infinitesimal. So I would just like to see the town council and the town manager get back to the table with Avangrid and work. There are issues. There's no question about it. There are realistic issues. Let's get back to the table. Let's work with Avangrid to provide a nice, reliable project to the town of Barnstable. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening, councilors. I guess it was Toby Leary's comments that, who I've only met twice in my life, motivated me to get up here tonight. Oh, sorry, Nick Atzilis, Centerville. Excuse me, I'm not used to being over here. Any rate, I just want to highlight, I just want to start off by saying, reiterate what Mr. Leary highlighted, which is, I was on the council for three years, and I can tell you, I don't, there was never a backdoor deal, clandestine meetings, payoffs, envelopes, all that stuff that so many conspiracy theorists in this town seem to want to put out there to discredit certain people, certain bodies in this town, and in some cases, leadership. I just want to make that clear from my experience, and I'll take that to the grave with me. Also, on the issue of transparency, gosh, some of you ran on that, and what I've been hearing and seeing is anything but. This confidential letter that's been floating around, it looks like it was written by one of the always angry social media groups. You know, "Councils, your elected officials, who are supposed to look at both sides of an issue, represent all residents of the town of Barnstable, not represent just an anti-this or pro-that group. Your oath is to the town of Barnstable," which means all residents. The fact that a councillor has a "wear full" sticker on their vehicle shows a bias. It's not a good look. You know, we have a new councillor that's been referred to as a housing advocate, yet this same councillor once referred to a village as a blank hole in a meeting that was attended by two councillors, two of them who are still sitting on this dais, so I do have witnesses that would certainly confirm that. You have councillors that are not adhering to proper protocol. You have councillors speaking outside of executive session, sharing information with residents. So I think that before you move forward on issues that affect the entire town, you should really look at yourselves and ask yourself what you ran on. Because with the exception of a few of the councils up there, I can see that what you ran on and what you're actually promoting and acting on here as a council, as an individual councillor, is anything but what you ran on. I think you fooled a lot of people. You got a lot of votes. That's the way things are. That's the way it goes. But I think it's time to shape up, and it would be nice if you represented the entire community, not just some special interest groups or folks that are always against and want to disrupt. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, my name is Grove Harris. I live in West Hyannis Port. Wow, it's always intense to come here and hear versions of reality that I did not entertain, and it's really hard to get to where facts are. I do think that we've had too many infomercials in terms of some of the presentations. I really appreciated the water thing last week. I want to encourage the town council to continue to work with educators, because I feel that much of the material there that was presented needs to be in our elementary schools, that we need to have our generations of young people in this area grow up absolutely knowing about that water cycle, and I don't want us to have to go over that basic common ground as people who have been here for many more years than that. I think we have to welcome shades of gray in our discussion, and I want to suggest that even public servants, who I appreciate last week in a way, they were doing a presentation to the public who was not in the room, but, you know, I was being presented to. But my feeling about our water quality is that, like my doctor has said, "You're living on the Cape full-time? Don't drink it. The cancer rates are just too high." And then I started just talking to him about breast cancer rates, and he's like, "No, I'm talking about brain cancer." And that is outside of the range of what Mr. Santos is responsible for measuring for us, but it needs to be on the table to know that there are plenty of citizens, I'm not the only person, who does not drink the water in this moment. And that means we are, in fact, importing a lot of bottled water already onto the Cape. So just to say, we're down the pike with the problem. The pumping of bottled water from around our country is a different problem, and there's been a new report coming out saying that we're actually losing ground, literally, from the amount of pumping that's happening, and that's going to work with the rising oceans against us. So I think transparency, we really need it. This dielectric spec sheet stuff, I don't know what to think anymore, but I think there has to be common ground, and there has to be a way that this town council can help us get to a real understanding of what is going on, and it will obviously need information from the companies. I feel like I get infomercials when I talk to the representatives of these companies, and it's just difficult, because they don't know how much information to give out and how much not. But I get a little concerned when it turns out that, okay, Vineyard Wind is actually 50% of it is owned by Avangrid, and 81% of Avangrid is owned by Abderola, which is a Spanish company, and they've just put out to buy the remaining 18%? And they are a huge, I mean, it's just unbelievably huge that my small town. So I already pigeonholed Mark and told him that I expect him to reach out to some of the towns in, you know, England and ask those town managers, "What did you learn through this permitting process? What do we need to know?" And I want him to--
Three minutes, if you could finish up, please.
Thank you. I will. I want him to set aside time to do that across the coast of New England, because we need this energy, but we, as a public, need to be smart and collaborate with each other, because these big corporations are fundamentally about return on investment and profit, and we are about drinking water. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Warpin, Executive Director of Hyannis Main Street Business Improvement District, the BID. I'm actually here to invite everybody, and we want to get the word out, that the bid is holding a retail attraction summit or forum on March 26, okay, at the Sturgis Building at 529 Main Street at 8:45 in the morning. We would love to have our partners and stakeholders and people that really care about what goes on in the downtown, what kind of retail mix that we attract and we're trying to attract, that they would want to be there. Because Michael Byrne is a consultant who has been working for over 40 years on American villages and small cities to try to improve their mix so they can be successful. And obviously, we all know that we all care about Hyannis downtown as the hub of Cape Cod, and we want to see the mix and its success with all the balances that we have and all the challenges that we all know that are in the downtown. And it's a very fine-tuned dance to have, and that's why we brought in Michael Byrne over seven years ago to the downtown. Does everyone remember the mini golf course on Main Street, Hyannis? Well, when the mini golf course sold for $1 million to the Wings Company, we thought the sky was falling. So Wings came in, and it was a year-round store on Main Street, okay? Whether we liked Wings or not, year-round presence in a downtown all those years ago was very important to the west end of downtown Hyannis, which gave a lot of developers and retailers confidence to come in. Across the street, you'll see Allium to Columbus having that confidence as a base hold. So you see how important strategy is. And now we are having a meeting at 529 Main Street when Sturgis bought the building, and guess what we thought was happening? That we thought the sky was falling. And remember, Sturgis is a nonprofit, and at that time, because nonprofits were a bad idea, because we had some social services in the downtown, oh my God, Sturgis should not be on Main Street. That was a big problem. And I was great friends with the crowds for the years, but they were really against Sturgis being in the downtown and convinced it would be the downfall of Hyannis Main Street. I personally think Sturgis, as one of the top high schools in the country, is a really great asset to downtown. If you own a restaurant, if anyone's seen any of the places in Main Street, and all the young kids on the Village Green, Village Green, another place that needs to be activated, wow, who knew? So when you have experts like Michael Byrne, who's going to be speaking, he's already spoken to us twice publicly and had over 40 stakeholders he's been interviewing over the years, including members of the Two Chambers and the Civic Association and all of our different friends and town councillors and--
If you could finish up, please.
Yeah, and members of our wonderful, you know, town planning department, all involved. This is great, because that's what we want to listen to, is experts helping us guide our path forward. And so I want to invite you. It's March 26. I'll send it out, you know, to your department. Please come, because I think it's important for all of us to take part in best practices. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Rob Brennan. I'm a resident of Osterville, and I'm speaking tonight in my individual capacity. I had planned on being here tonight. I planned on talking about two things. Number one, a long conversation I had with Councillor Starr about how we can move climate and housing interests together in lockstep. And number two, the Economic Development Summit that I attended, and I know Councillor Levesque was in attendance as well, and I hope both of them will speak to that. But this afternoon, I, to answer your question before it's asked, received in the mail at my office this confidential, exciting news announcing a change of course underway. And to follow, and I understand too, that other members of the Main Street bid received the letter as well, and I've spoken with them. The bid was lied to during our meeting on February 13. We had heard rumor of this, and we specifically asked a question about it. What we were told by the council president was, quote, "I don't have an agenda for Main Street," and, quote, "I collect the ideas and put them in a basket." There's nothing about this confidential change of course underway that reads as if it's anything other than an agenda, and it does not read as if it's a collection of ideas put into a basket. So the questions I have is, who drafted this? The questions I have are, did this council vote on the items that are identified in here, described as mandates and directives to, quote, "fix the new downtown Hyannis form based zoning," to, quote, "address parking shortage," and to, quote, "bring expertise, additional resources to the building commissioner's office so that interpretation of zoning laws is consistent," or rewrite or reintroduce the planning board into the review process? That obviously implies that there is an inconsistency of how the zoning laws are interpreted, and it also demonstrates a lack of understanding of how Chapter 48, Section 7, is organized. There is one zoning enforcement officer in the town of Barnstable that's designated by statute. The planning board does not play the role of the zoning enforcement officer. So there's a lot of issues with this, and I won't touch on the ones that have been touched on already.
Understood through my interactions with Felicia Penn that as a resident of Hyannis, as a person who was born in Hyannis, who has served on multiple committees and boards, that she had a wealth of knowledge. And because of that, as president of Save Twin Brooks, I would acknowledge, I would reach out to Felicia to understand how things worked in this town. So I'm sorry that I don't know what's, what you're discussing at the moment, but I have to say to Mr. Chuck Carey and other members who might agree with him, that Felicia Penn is one of the most knowledgeable leaders of our town and is very intelligent as, and as I have observed, as in my experiences, has had unbiased opinions in terms of weighing her knowledge and experience with whatever is going on that we're discussing. And I just want to say that to the group.
Who's not a board member?
Pardon?
Is not a board member.
And she's not a board member of Save Twin Brooks at all. So I'm sorry, I don't know exactly what you're discussing, but I just had to jump in and say, I appreciate the leadership of the town council, and I appreciate every single member of the board on the town council because they listen. Unlike some members who are no longer on the town council, who didn't listen, who wouldn't call me back or talk to us. I just think, I think we've got a great opportunity here to move forward, and I just wanted to say this, and thank you so much for letting me talk. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Okay, that's, that's it for town for public comment, but Mr. Santos would like to, he's, he's been here listening, and he was aware that there would be many comments said about the workshop last week, and he asked if it would be possible to give him time to respond to some of the comments, if he so chose. And since he's approaching the podium, I assume he's choosing to.
Thank you, Dan Santos, Director of Public Works. Not really to answer, address comments, but I wanted to just provide a little context and perhaps clarify the purpose of last week and how it's possible that that's been misconstrued by some, some people over the, over the past week. So, I don't know what we're... Okay, I think that's off now.
It's gone now. Go ahead, I'm sorry for the intrusion.
Primarily to address what some see as an inconsistency in what was presented and what information is in the record. So I don't see any inconsistency at all, and I'll explain why. First of all, I'm a, I'm a groundwater advocate. I've spent 35 years as a professional on this peninsula and a resident, protecting, educating, understanding, cleaning, and investigating groundwater. I, as some of the kids would say in the vernacular, have some groundwater cred. I know what I'm talking about, generally. Doesn't mean to say there aren't other experts and people that know more than, more than I do. But last week's session was meant to educate the council and the public on our groundwater protection efforts, which is what my aim was in doing the presentation I did. My goal is to advise you, that's, that's my role, that's my, what I do, is to advise the manager, advise the council, for you then to make policy. Last week, we weren't making policy, you weren't making decisions, I was providing information on which you can base future decisions after you discuss it, hear from other experts, but it's my job, and in fact, my ethical obligation, to provide you professional advice, and that's, that's what I did. So we heard tonight that, and this is no revelation to me, perhaps to you, but there was testimony given at the EFSP, the Energy Facility Siting Board, about transformer stations and dielectric fluid and how harmful it could be to the groundwater. Well, I know that. What wasn't said here was, I testified, not in 2018, but in 2015, I testified to those same things, because I'm, I'm interested in protecting our groundwater. And the reason that the town took the positions it did was because we know the difficulty when dealing with utilities and the Energy Facility Siting Board. And so our choice was to take a very strident position, very firm, to protect our interests, our soil, our groundwater, our air, knowing that if, if we just let it go and didn't, and didn't take that strong position, we not have, we may not have gotten anything out of that. But what we did get is containment beneath new transformers, which is a tremendous mitigation of the very remote possibility of a spill or catastrophic leak from one of these facilities. So people that work for me made that testimony, I made that testimony, and I would do it again, and I would advise that we do all we can to protect our groundwater. Now, on the other hand, last week, all I simply told you was, based on my professional experience, knowledge, training, and education, and information that was not available in 2015 and 2018 on the exact material or the dielectric fluid that was going to be in those transformers, we now have more information, we've learned more. So my position was simply that I didn't find, I don't find transformer stations to be the threat that they're being made out to be by others. I, I believe we should protect our groundwater as much as we can, that having containment, having mitigation, having spill control measure plans, all makes perfect sense for the very remote possibility that there could be a leak, but I, my conclusion simply was that I don't find it to be a significant threat. I still don't, no one's brought anything to my attention that would change that opinion. So these are just a few thoughts I wanted you to know about what I presented and why last week, and how you will use that information in the policy, policy decisions that you make, that's how our system works. So, thank you for the time.
Thank you for putting that on the record. Okay, we have council response to public comment, and after that, we're going to take a quick break. Response, Mr. Blum, Council Blum.
This letter, Nick, Rob, this letter got, got the reaction that it wanted to get from you guys. Rob, the Jesuits at B.C. taught me to see right through this letter, and they taught you to see through it too. This is nothing but an attempt to take information that's been floating around, organize it, and it was done by someone who's very familiar with what goes on in this council, and put it out there to alarm you people and to denigrate our leadership. I don't know who, because you asked, did we vote on anything? Nothing of the sort happened. This is the kind of letter that destroys town councils. Whoever, whoever wrote this may have thought they were getting away with something and exposing and causing problems. Yeah, they are causing problems. This is disgusting and outrageous. You think it can be done? The people who did this were cowards, because they don't even sign their name to it.
Council Lucky?
Yeah, thank you, Council Blum. I agree with your sentiments, I agree with the statement that they're cowards, and it's very difficult because we are speaking to all of our residents here at the town council meetings, and when we have people come up and talk about letters that were mailed to them anonymously, and I think Kim McGuire expressed it beautifully, I don't know what you guys are talking about, but it's certainly getting heated. It, it puts everyone at a disadvantage, and perhaps that's what you were referring to, you know, it just, you know, it throws a grenade in there that it's maybe inappropriate. And I think it actually serves to tell us that what we're going to be voting on later tonight is incredibly valuable, and that is these ad hoc subcommittees that I think have been beautifully detailed and worked through the process, and they're going to be presented tonight, and they're going to be made up of councilors and residents, and I think they're going to open up and discuss what we need to discuss. And I think all, everyone who's spoken tonight, from the folks with the wind farm to these folks that are talking about this bizarre anonymous letter that has to do with kind of zoning or something, show us that we're on the right track. We're going to have these subcommittees, and I know I and Felicia, Craig, you were there, we had a wonderful opportunity through the Mass Municipal Association when we were first elected this year, to go up to a training session, and it was for city council governments, we are a city council government, and we found we're the only one that doesn't, oh, and Chris Clark, sorry, you were there, that don't have these, these committees that councilors have. So I think this is a step in the right direction, I, I think it's a great thing, and it'll bring all of this, this angst into the view. I, my, I can only assume as we work to staff these committees, we do it in a very open way through our appointments process, and we have hearings, and, and we sort this out, and it, it's great. I mean, you know, normally I try to, the hour's getting late, but certainly some, some fantastic comments tonight, and I know we're going to have more discussion on the, the wind farms. And I've always thought, and I'll just speak for myself, that the way we're going about this is a failure of the federal government, and perhaps we can take that into what we're talking about with this, this anonymous letter, that at our level, if we don't get it right and we don't think it through, then it goes down, it creates the angst that we're seeing, and we're seeing people fighting against each other, which is, which is very undesirable and very unproductive. And that's what I feel about in the wind farm, and I know Suzanne had posted on her, her Facebook page, a short video by Ralph Fiennes, actor, English actor, the English patient Schindler's List, a fantastic actor, and he talks about the failure too, at, at a broader level, and that's the kind of thing that's going on with the wind farms in England. But I, I wish our federal government hadn't gone like, one, two, three, go, okay, sort it out down there, guys, sort it out. It's absurd, and if we'd had some better direction and some, some work at a more regional level, perhaps we wouldn't be in this situation. But I, I certainly admire Felicia Penn, I, I voted for her and, and Craig to be our leadership, because I think they have the qualities we need, and I think these ad hoc subcommittees are just the recipe to move us forward in a productive way and have us work as a town. And thank you, Charlie, for the kind of tee up, thank you so much.
Other comments? Council Neary?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you all for additional comments tonight. Mr. Scheingold mentioned the possibility of getting maybe Avangrid or the representatives back in the room, but, you know, I've, I've, there's a question that's been, been sticking with me that I just can't seem to root out. Whether the cables land or don't land in our town, there is, there is a national major upgrade of our, of our electric utilities. I mean, it's ongoing, it's required, it's mandated, I've got folks that I know that are involved with it. And the question I have really is, you know, it seems to be hinging on this dielectric Should the cables not land, or will we have dielectric oils appearing in all of our new substations? That's really a question that has kind of been, been in my head, and I haven't really been able to sort it out or get really an answer. So there's kind of three legs to this chair, I guess, or stool. If, Madam President, that, you know, you deem maybe a meeting with a rep from Avangrid, I think we should have a meeting with, get Eversource in here. I'm sure that Town Manager Ellis is in the process of, let's say, investigating and trying to ensure our safety, I'm sure that there were conversations, there must be a rep out there where we can include and hopefully get them to speak on the record in terms of what goes in these things regardless of whether there's a cable. That would really be my thoughts on that.
Thank you. Any other comments on the right? Gordon? Pardon me, Council Star?
Thank you. I just want to thank Dylan for coming tonight from, from Sturgis School. It takes courage to come here, and you've obviously gotten a good civics lesson out of it, too. Thank you.
Good for you. Comments on the left? Council Clark?
Thank you very much, President Penn. I too would like to congratulate you for devising these subcommittees that not only are comprised of councilors, who are the elected officials here, but also residents who care, and that you are giving an opportunity for residents who are not elected officials to weigh in on some of these forensic styled evaluation of some of the issues that can help us perform more efficiently and more effectively for the citizenry. So thank you.
Thank you. Council Menes?
Thank you, Madam President.
Is your mic on?
Yes, a lot to digest tonight, but I have to say, since this is my third year on council, this is the most embarrassed I've ever been. To get this letter in the mail, when other, other people in town knew about it and us on the council didn't, it's not only disappointing but embarrassing. I want to know who wrote it. I want to know who penned it, because I will not vote on any subcommittees until I know where this le, this letter came from. None, zero. Because if there's ulterior motives, which is clearly written in this letter, I want to know. That's where I stand. The people in this town deserve to know where this letter came from, they deserve to know who penned it, and if this came from leadership, which it says it did in this letter, then we all deserve to know. We'll talk about when next time, that's all I have to say.
Who did that other letter come from?
I have no idea. It was mailed to me today, got in my town mailbox, and it's embarrassing, this is embarrassing. I mean, we're, we're sitting here telling people that we want to be transparent, but then there's people going behind our backs doing things in, in the dark of night. The council, no, the council never voted on any of this stuff. This is the first I've seen it.
Any other comments? Council Crowe?
Yeah, thank you, President Penn. We've had a lot of talk about, as Council Neary was talking about the dielectric fluids, and I'm going to channel my, my next door neighbor here on this, about finding out what the facts are. I think it's time we did that, I think it's time, maybe our legal department. I've talked to, I've been in meetings with Avangrid forever, they're not forthcoming on any information that we want, specific information, a lot of the information they've given us has not been, been correct. So I was thinking that maybe our legal department could actually get in contact with one of the principals, not one of the public relations people, like Mr. Kimmel or Patrick Johnson, but actually write them a letter and say, we would like a list of all the chemicals, what the chemicals products names are, what their chemical codes are, the manufacturer of those cancels, and the specific quantities of all fluids and gases that are going into these substations. No ifs, ands, or buts, maybe an affidavit is necessary, that this group, this officer of this company, Avangrid, will actually tell the public, which we haven't been able to find out, what these actual chemicals are. I would like to know what they are, okay? And I think that's our right, we're trying to, the, the station in Independence Park is already up and running. I don't think we have a fire response plan to that right yet, we don't have a, you know, a general idea of what the chemicals are in that, because the company has not been forthcoming. So I'd like to see us do that, and ask them, and have an unequivocal, an affidavit from these people, this is exactly what we're dealing with, this puts this issue to rest, and we can look up what those chemicals are ourselves by the chemical number and, and the product type, and see what the implications of this are, and that will settle this for everybody, because we haven't come to any kind of conclusion so far. After that, I also want to say something about this letter. I think it's one of the most refreshing things I've ever read. I've never heard the sound of an ox be in gourd, but I'm hearing it tonight. Okay? Nobody decides what goes on in this town without the permission of the town council, without the direction of the town council, okay? I have no problem with development in this, in this, in this, in this town, I think we need housing, I think we need development, no question about it. Development that we decide is, is beneficial to all of us, and I'm, I'm not saying we direct developers what to do, but there has been a, in the past, and I, I've seen this forthright, about our planning department and development, and who sits, not only in the town council, but in any other commission meeting, sits up here versus who should be sitting there. A lot of people who should be sitting there are sitting up here in these, these, these subcommittees and commissions. That's going to stop, okay? If you have a personal interest in something going on, you should not be sitting up here making a decision on your own personal interest. Mr. Brennan, I've read your emails to the, to the planning director. I think anybody should go and see the FOIA request about his, his emails and texts to the planning director and read those, they're on the town website. They're appalling. It shows a, a obedience to a developer that is far outside of what any, any town employee should be doing, okay? And I think we should, everybody should know about what that's, I can see you shaking your head, but I'm, I'm just saying, people can read it for themselves, okay? We are not for or against development, we are, just want to see development that is not shoved upon the, the community, it is something that we all would, would, would benefit from, okay? And I think that's what we need to see. So what we're seeing now is, is a, is a, you know, a kickback from those who've had to sit at the table for so long and run this town, and that's what I ran on. Mr. Atlas, I ran on transparency, and this is what you're, what you're seeing now is transparency. And I think you said, we fooled a lot of people. Nobody's fooled anymore, these are going to be in public, and I'm sorry if that, that upset some people, but we are going to develop here, and those developments are going to be fully known to the public. Before they happen, before they're at the first reading in the town and the second reading, we know what's going on, and that's the way it should work here, and that's transparency.
Any other comments from councils? Council Levec?
Thank you, President Penn. So, he says a lot of angst, I think it's, it needs to be understood that, and I was hoping that the author of the letter would say that they were the author of the letter, but the author of the letter was President Penn, and the author of the letter, that was a letter or memo that was sent to the planning department. And I knew of the letter, didn't get the letter until today, but the, it's directives, the directives given to the planning department based on a perception of what was going on by the president of the town council. Were those things going on? I do find it that there's a lot of assumptions there, and again, you don't, you're not seeing it, so it's not fair. It just, this was in our mailbox today. I requested a copy of the letter, and I told I was not going to get a copy of the letter. So there is definitely an agenda here about what, the idea of what needs to happen in the town of Barnstable as far as growth. There's a lot of difference of opinions in regards to that. It should all be talked about on this dais. Yes, there are different, I, the Economic Development Task Force, I, I have explained this in nauseam, I was, I inherited that committee with, when I, my first year as president. That was a committee started by Jimmy Crocker, President Jimmy Crocker, passed away. That was put together to try to find 10, and through the president, Town Manager Mark Ellis, feel free to come up and correct me at any point in time, because you would probably have best knowledge about it in the room. There was, it was put to place to bring businesses, people who work and try to permit things, to work with the building department, to try to really provide a better customer service to people in town, because it just seemed to be sometimes a, you know, a lack of communication or just not a synergy that was a smooth process. That's all that was put together, they came with, together with 10 priorities and tried to work through those things, very public meetings, it was, again, task force that was put together by Jimmy, Jimmy passes away, dies. So we get a new president, who inherits this, and it's Council President Paul Hebert. He takes over as, and then, and he takes over in January of 2020, don't think I need to tell anybody what happened in 2020, COVID. This committee felt so impassioned to try to move forward and continue to try to do the good work that they were doing, that they started to meet on their own, which they weren't supposed to do, and they didn't take meeting minutes, and then they started their own subcommittee, and they didn't take minutes on that either. And sometimes planning department knew, again, we're in the midst of COVID, and people can say a conspiracy theory, it was people who were trying to do their best they can in the circumstances that they were dealt. Move forward, Paul Hebert understands that, ew, my goodness, this is what's happening right now. There's no liaison, Jimmy was the liaison to the committee. He assigns Eric Steinheilber, I believe, in the fall, to try to bring it back together. So then they, and then the subcommittees already existed, so you're trying to bring something back together at the end of 2021, I'm sorry, 2020, and, and then, you know, people started showing up because they thought there was something going on that was nefarious, and it looked like it was just about the businesses, and it, and it was just something to work with our town, to try to work better with the people who do business with the town. That's all it was, economic, development, task force. I took it over, there was so much contention regards to it, I sunset it, like every other subcommittee, because we had residents that were coming to meetings and dropping F-bombs in, in, you can listen to the last economic subcommittee, and someone dropped an F-bomb and said Elizabeth Jenkins doesn't effing get it. I sunset that committee. So all this frustration, there's no, sometimes it's, it's, it's in, we're doing the best we can, okay? That letter, I can understand why it's very insulting, it has, it has an agenda to it. It's not vetted out into the entire council. So, you know, it, we should talk about things on this dais. I did that as president, I don't, I don't understand where this whole transparency thing came from, I don't understand the personal interest part of it, I really don't. I'd like to see some facts, if that involves me, by the way. So, again, it's really hard not to take things personal, really is, and the attacks, social media, things of that nature, and I'm not here to lecture anybody, but at the same time, if things were just, in, in these subcommittees, if this is a way to try to push it along on the agenda, I'm not for it. I'm not for it, because in that letter, it doesn't say anything about inclusivity, it doesn't say anything about equity. We're in a housing crisis, people need a place to live, and I understand that, and I see it on a daily basis, and people who are in this community, 20% to 30% of our community is not represented in this room, and, but to build affordable housing, it's not affordable even, so we got to work with developers. It would be great if we'd be able to build it on our own at a lower cost, it's just not possible, it doesn't pencil out. I really firmly believe we could have it all, we really can, but we just got to work together. Thank you, President Penn.
Any other comments? Council Schnapp?
Thank you, President Penn. I share with Council Levec and Council Neary, as being a veteran member of this council, I was elected over six years ago, and at that time, the leadership was Eric Steinheilber and Jimmy Crocker, and there were in place the three subcommittees that some have been referenced, asset management, zoning and regulations, and actually, we had a committee, subcommittee on homelessness, primarily in Hyannis. And some of those committees had long histories, and some of them had short histories, and some of them had brought things already to the council, they served at the pleasure of the leadership, so there was one time that we got a complete swap, there were, some of us on the asset management... There were some of us on the Asset Management. And then the next day, we found out we were back on the zoning and zoning regs. And lucky me, I was one who got back to the zoning and regs and was handed the, "Let's talk about short-term rentals." Oh, that's, that's a great topic. And, and we spent a lot of time on that and trying, and brought some things to the full council. Those are all public meetings. They were all open. There was public comment. Now, what I will say, and what is possibly a challenge for any of the committees that may now be constituted, is having enough administrative help to make sure that minutes are done, and minutes are approved, and minutes are posted, and minutes are in a place that people can find. You know, it, as far as I can tell, there has never been any intentional reason to hide any information that is conducted here in the town of Barnstable. Ever. I mean, there might be side conversations, as I've never heard of. But in terms of the public process, that information is there. And, you know, the decisions and the recommendations we came out. I know that Ms. Hunt spoke about the ADU. That was, that was a topic that was gaining a lot of traction in a lot of our communities. The Cape Cod Commission had published a model bylaw. It made a lot of sense for the zoning and regulatory subcommittee to look into that. And I think we brought forward, after several meetings, an ordinance that came before the full council and was passed unanimously. So it did its work. I was, had joined Council Leveque at the time on leadership and agreed with his decision at the time to sunset all of these committees because they had received so much public scrutiny or concern that there were things that were happening. And, you know, we were still in the midst of COVID at that time. So now we enter into a new period where we have a lot of important priorities that we need to be dealing with in this community. We have a housing crisis. We have a huge wastewater infrastructure plan. I mean, you know, I guess we'll talk about that soon. We have, we have an agenda item. But, and the wind farm, you know, the, there are some concerns that have been brought up on the wind farm. And we are dealing with that in a variety of ways. But we do have a lot of work to get done. So having smaller groups of the council focus on some of that is not a bad idea. And I think later on in the agenda, we'll have a little bit more opportunity to discuss which committees are most vital for us to institute now, how they should be composed, and et cetera, the process. Because, you know, we may actually have some concerns about some of that. But I'll leave it to that part of the agenda. I just want to say that my part of being on this council, working with this staff, is we're working for you. And that's what we're going, I pledge to continue to, that's my job. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Council Blum?
Okay, I guess there's another letter, too, that I see here. If indeed, if Felicia wrote this one, then there's not a reason, there's no, she doesn't need to sign it because she had a target committee of people. I don't know, I'm just speculating at this point. But if she was giving this to the Planning Board, it doesn't need to be signed. They knew who gave it to her. If that is the case. I don't even know if that's the case. But this one right here, this is another one. I didn't even know about this one until Seth gave it to me. This is, this is poison. This is nothing but poison that's aimed at disturbing this Town Council and causing enmity between us. Who sent this out to everybody? I'd like to know who sent this out to everybody, because they're... It's really sickening, what's going on here.
All set? I have no comment to make because I don't comment on anything that's anonymous. So we're going to go and have a, it's 7:56. So we'll be back at 10 past 8. How's that? Thank you.
They went to, um.
Guess we know who the snake is now.
Huh?
I said, guess we know who the snake is now.
Well, very interesting stuff. Now, I didn't.
Okay, so next on the agenda is Town Manager Communications. And the Town Manager update for February fourteenth through March fifth. He talked about the Budget Action Calendar. He talked about the executive order creating the Commission on Clean Energy Infrastructure, signing and permitting, that's a mouthful, that Governor Maury Healy signed. And that we've asked for a seat at the table and we're not, not that we weren't allowed, but other people were appointed in our stead. And that the Acton Town Manager, who is at the table, is a committee member and he's been in communication with our town, which is awfully nice. And we do have a member of the community who's there, who represents a different organization. And he's been very responsive to us also. So we're waiting for more communication because at one of the last things, you can come up here, Mark, I don't have to stumble through this on my own. Anyway, so that's an ongoing thing and he can do that in his words. And then you can kind of, why don't you just do highlights of the rest? Is that good?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Ellis, Town Manager. I'll just start from the beginning. We're in, you know, obviously proceeding with the budget. You've got your hard copies of the Capital Improvement Program before you. And, you know, those hearings will be, be coming up, second meeting in April. And so certainly we're available for any questions that you may have as we progress through that. President Penn was referring to what the governor created in a Commission on Clean Energy Infrastructure and Siting. This was a committee that was really to look at, relevant to, you know, citing and permitting, how to streamline that process. So we had heard about it. I reached out to Senator Seer immediately. Senator Seer actually has reached out many times through the Lieutenant Governor, trying to get Barnstable a seat on that committee. I don't know how active they were until after the beginning of the, this year, because they were created in twenty-three. It appeared they became more active in twenty-four. And we have not been given a seat on that committee. But as already stated, both the Mass Municipal Association representative, he's a town administrator from Acton, and then the, actually the building, you know, the building industry representative, and he's our resident, have both reached out, provided me with any documents that they have. I'm taking a look at them at this point. There was also, and if you go into the links that I've provided, there were a couple of opportunities to comment and to take a survey. And you can still take the survey through March fifteenth if you choose to. There's eleven sections with multiple questions. So it's going to take you a while. I think it took me like a day and a half when I literally sat down and, and we didn't have much time because I wanted to get mine in by the first because I knew they were starting comments on the fifth and sixth. So I wanted them to have my comments going into that because I was afraid that it would just be filled out and not looked at. So I did comment on the fifth and so did President Penn and others. And I didn't attend the sixth in the evening, so there may have been more representing, you know, Cape Cod or even just municipal government. You know, in general, I do not agree with the approach to try to streamline this in a way that does not engage certainly the municipalities. Certainly a municipality that has direct impact by what in many cases a federal estate agency will be approving, that we may not have input. Or if we do have input, that input doesn't have impact on how they proceed and approve. So in general, that was the comment, cautioned them to that. Once again, offered for Barnstable to be available, if for no other reason, as the community in the United States who has already experienced this. And I signed my survey. And I told them that at the comment opportunity because I think it's inexcusable that we're not sitting at the table. And I don't have anything else to say about that. I know Julian, as recent as this week, met with Lieutenant Governor and reinforced that feeling. So more to come and we'll see what comes out. I believe they're going to issue recommendations by the end of this month, which if you, if for no other reason, go ahead and look at the survey because it's a lot. And there's many areas that there's no way you can write down enough to be able to address what needs to be discussed. So this should be a roll up your sleeves and work through it for whatever time it takes because, you know, when you look at what the, if you haven't viewing public especially, but, but any and all, if you haven't looked at what our federal government has laid out for us relevant to renewable energy and offshore wind. And if you haven't looked at what the state of Massachusetts is planning relevant to offshore wind, and it's an ease, go right on mass.gov and just put in offshore wind and it'll come right up. And then you can click on it and you can look at maps and you can look at what's been approved and who's been assigned grant areas. You really do begin to get a feeling that this is just the beginning. Okay, just the beginning. And it's just the beginning from the coast to Maine down to the Carolinas. Okay, and so a lot of attention needs to be paid to it. And there's merit to the renewable energy, absolutely. But I think it was well said earlier this evening that, you know, our federal government dropping it on us rather than engaging us in it, especially when we may end up hosting some aspect of it, is really not the most effective approach, in my opinion, as somebody who's, plays that sort of administrative role for a community. So, and we've shared all that and I will continue to share it and I hope that it is listened to. Cobal's Beach, I've had active discussions with Vineyard Wind. And they are putting together the informational signage and they're talking about creating a URL link for anybody who wants to click in and look at whether it's safe and compliant. And I'm waiting to see specifically what that is. Tom Cambraire has been reaching out to me regularly. I told Tom, when I, when I get the info, I'm going to call you up, I'm going to have you come over and sit down with me, as I will with my staff and look at it. And it needs to be in place by May so that everybody can know what they are saying to us, which is it's safe and compliant. So that's what's expected of it, quite honestly. I mean, when we went through these processes back in two thousand and eighteen and nineteen and had extensive discussions about voltage and EMF and other issues, you know, it was said to, that, that was what was permitted? And it was even described, somebody asked about, what happens if it isn't? Then they shut it off and they fix it. And there's two ways to shut it off. It automatically goes off or they can physically shut it off. And that's what we were told. So that's what is anticipated. And I guess if they don't, then I turn to legal and I ask how to proceed accordingly to protect any safety issues that may exist. But they are very engaged in discussions with us. Vineyard Wind is very engaged in discussions with us at this point. Changing subjects, I had come before Town Council. I shared several letters to the members of the Clean, Clean Water Trust. They are state officials who the governor appoints to that trust. And they determine how funding is administered through the State Revolving Fund program. Those letters asked for more money primarily because there is a fund that has been created. It's the Cape and Islands Water Protection Trust Fund. And the Town Council appointed me as Town Manager to serve on behalf of Barnstable on that. I'm the Vice Chair of the Board and I'm the Vice Chair of the Executive Committee and I'm the Chair of the Bylaws and Regulations Committee. So I'm very engaged in what they're doing. The intent of that was to provide a subsidy, a principal subsidy to eligible wastewater projects from the revenue that is brought into that trust. The revenues have been tracking since the, since the beginning, twenty-twenty. The revenues has been tracking as projected. What isn't tracking as projected is the number of wastewater projects and the cost of those wastewater projects. And we've seen astronomical inflationary impacts on construction, more than double in some cases. And every community in the region is experiencing it. So what does that mean? It means providing what was originally viewed as a twenty-five percent principal subsidy isn't viable under the way that they, they, the trust, the Clean Water Trust, which is a state trust, the ones who lend the money and then administer the loan. The way that they said to us, we could do our, the way that they said to us, we could apply the funds that the Cape and Islands Wastewater Trust Fund received, wasn't our choice how it gets administered to the loan. Mark Milne and, and, you know, Sean O'Brien attended with me a recent meeting that really deviated from the last letters that I provided you. And I had told you at that last meeting that I'd be looking for a letter of support to secure funding so we can get back to twenty-five percent. Basically what the state trust, the Clean Water Trust said to us was, well, originally the, you, you, you proposed a, a model to use that would allow for paying, you know how you pay a loan, twenty years long? What we proposed was, okay, over that twenty-year period, we would give you principal subsidy twenty-five percent worth. They said, no, we don't want to do it that way. We want you to give us all the money upfront. So if it's a ten million dollar loan, you'd give us two-point-five million in the first year. We said, we can't, we can't do that. We don't even have money yet in the fund. So then they said, okay, we'll give it to us over four years. That's where it landed. So we were going back to the state asking for two different sources of funding to help us stay at the twenty-five percent principal subsidy under that scenario. Those are the letters I gave you. They came back to us and said, no, we're not going to give you the money. Now, is that final? No, but we're going to vote on the twenty-four projects for Cape Cod in about thirty days. So it's final for twenty-four and we're down around twelve percent. And we're concerned we're going to land between nine and twelve percent if we continue to have to do it the way they're saying they want it administered. So we went to them with that request. They said, no, we can't do this strategy, but why don't you go back and look at modeling it the way you originally proposed, which is over the life of the loan to give the money twenty-five percent of whatever that loan payment is in that year incrementally over the twenty years. If, and, and so the Executive Committee reviewed this and approved it under that new modeling scenario. Director Milne's here if you want to ask financial questions as to whether that's a viable approach. I had him there to advise me during that meeting because I wasn't going to vote in favor of something that certainly he said to me, no, that doesn't make sense. He advised me that it did make sense, so I proceeded. Now it gets referred back to bylaws. I think we have a meeting on the eighteenth and bylaws will be followed immediately by the full board. So if we vote all of that, then the board can come back when the projects come forward for twenty-five and beyond. We're looking at probably at least the next ten years, we would be doing a twenty-five percent principal subsidy on these projects. Now that's significant. It's significant to Barnstable. We've got almost two-hundred million dollars worth of wastewater to do in twenty-five. Twenty-five percent is a significant amount of money. So this is progressing, these are all public meetings. So the public rarely attends, but they're all available if the public would like to view these.
Counselor Schnep, did you have a question?
So I'm not going to ask you for a letter of support because they already told us,
No.
we're not going to do that strategy. Look at this.
Another time we'll get another letter.
Yes.
Yeah.
Just so I, I think I understand what you were saying is that initially the projects that we're getting, the principal subsidy would get that money sooner? And now it's going to be stretched out over time or, you're not getting any more money coming in, but you're finding a mechanism to honor the twenty-five percent principal subsidy?
Yes.
By elongating the payout of principal?
Yes.
The principal subsidy?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And according to our finance director, it doesn't have any significant impact on our projects?
This is important enough that I'm going to ask Mark to come up and, you know, share his view of it, so.
He was nodding his head in the back, you couldn't see that.
Oh, I couldn't see him back there. But I, this is significant for us. We have a massive financial, you know, beyond environmental and technical and regulatory financial undertaking here. So, Mark, why don't you speak to that?
Good evening. Mark Milne, Director of Finance. Yeah, so the way the new model will work is as opposed to getting a twenty-five percent Yeah, so the way the new model will work is, as opposed to getting a 25% principal subsidy paid out over a four-year period, it's going to be paid out over a 20-year period. And the financial benefit of maintaining that 25% subsidy is significant. For example, the projects that we have listed in our '25 and '26 CIP Capital Improvement Plan for the sewer expansion program totals about $240 million. So, 25% subsidy on that amount is significant. It's about $60 million, I think. If we were to lose that subsidy, down to 12%, you know, that's half, we'll lose $30 million in a subsidy. The downside of this strategy is that we have to borrow more because we're not getting the principal subsidy. So, we ran the numbers, for example, on the $240 million. Over the life of those loans, we'd pay $10 million more in interest, but we'd get $30 million more in principal subsidy over the 20-year period. So, it's a net gain for the town of Barnstable by maintaining the 25% subsidy. So, by stretching out the payments over a 20-year period, they're able to maintain a 25% subsidy for all communities. We've asked for their models, we want to see what their modeling looks like. They said that they would be able to sustain a 25% subsidy in perpetuity, which is good news, assuming, I think they said, all total project costs submitted to the trust would be $350 million for the next five years, and then $150 million every year thereafter. So, I'd like to see that modeling, just to double-check it before they finally make the vote on it. But if that model looks good, this is good for the town of Barnstable and for the whole Cape. Thank you.
Well, given that this changed, because originally it was going to be 25% with the model, the original model, I mean, what's to say the model's not going to change again? But I guess we're just going to have to wait.
We're going to have to wait. I mean, is $350 million over the next five years a good assumption? I mean, we have $240 million ourselves in the next two years, or over 400 million over the next five.
Mark, do either of you have a sense of the other towns' tolerance for this change?
The Executive Committee, which is, I believe, seven members of the Board unanimously supported it. It hasn't gone before bylaws committee, so not only will we be looking at what the model says, but we'll be looking for how they're looking to modify the bylaws as well. So, but, and it's a, I want to say it's a five-member regulatorium, regulation and by, a bylaw and regulation committee. So, you know, then that will go to the full board. So, I'll let you know as it progresses, and, but it's a long answer to why I'm not asking for a letter of support, so. Thank you. What else did I speak about? I spoke about Lane Partridge, our Director of Assessing, having updated his video that he put together, and I encourage all our residents to watch this, regardless of if you've seen, or if you've seen some issue with your assessment of your property, or you have concerns about what your tax bill is or not. So, if you're listening to this and you're not even thinking, I would go and watch this. This is something that every adult who owns a property should watch. That's all I can say to you. So, take a look at it, and then Mark Milne and Lane are available for any questions you may have relevant to this. It's an excellent video. And our Youth Commission held their jobs fair on Wednesday. It's already gone by. It was a great success. You know, I think a little under 300 young people came from all over the Cape and well beyond. I think from the Salt Shore was the, some of the more long-distance travelers to come to this. But all are welcome. You know, Cape Cod RTA helped to get people there transported. I did hear that somehow somebody said to one of our students somewhere that maybe they didn't need to go to it. So, I'll make sure that I announce this multiple times next year, or I'll make sure Lynn Poyant does it for us. Lynn, write that down, okay? And every student who wants to go should go. It's worth it. It's an excellent opportunity, even if you don't need a job, to learn every resume writing and interview skills, and just to kind of network and meet all those other young people from our region. And our Youth Commission is wonderful, I can't say enough about the work they do. And then we closed with Kate Maldonado providing an update from planning and development on the local comprehensive plan. Thank you, that's the Town Manager communication.
Any other questions for Manager Els? Counsel Schnepp?
Thank you, and thank you, Mark. I just had a follow-up question on number three regarding the Vineyard Wind cable and the EMF compliance issues. You state that the town of Barnstable plans to retain an independent third-party expert to verify such safety issues. Do we have any sense what that means? I know we had a present, or a public comment by Tom Camberberry a couple of meetings ago offering, you know, some type of monitoring, but I don't know if that's the direction we're going in.
No, we're looking at bringing in a third-party expert. The problem is, there aren't many out there, and they don't believe that this is even a problem, neither does the state in their permitting. So, they're scratching their head a little bit on why we would be doing this, but we will find someone who's an expert. We're not talking about somebody with a handheld meter that they bought somewhere locally. We're talking about somebody that's an independent expert coming in. And we would need money to do this, and we would pay them, and we're not, and I'll discuss it with council in whatever frequency we believe would be appropriate. That's what we'll do to make sure that our public knows that it's safe.
And we'll do this on a monthly basis, or I don't know what?
To be determined, I think. I mean, you know, I would think we would want to do it because my very limited understanding of this, I'm not the person that would be doing this for the town, is that certainly as the voltage changes, then there is EMF in that system, and therefore, you would want to incrementally be testing this as that voltage changes. So, they're only at a few turbines at this point, and I don't even know if it's constant. So, we're going to need to understand that, and we're going to be able to, we're going to, what Vineyard Wind is talking about is having a URL code that anybody can click into and be able to look at, you know, the safety of what's going on. And then obviously, the compliance with all permits, we don't issue those type of permits at the state of Massachusetts, we'll want all of our residents to be able to see that everything's in place and compliant.
Okay, thank you.
That's the intent.
Just to note, I would think that Vineyard Wind would pay for that service, the EMF.
I will certainly ask. On the flip side, though, I really don't want to leave the question hanging for our residents.
No.
You know what I mean? I would think that they will monitor and we will verify. That's what I, that's what I would want to do.
All set? All righty, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, next is our minutes. I would entertain a motion in a second to accept the minutes, unless there's any.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Are there any changes, deletions, admissions? No? All in favor? Aye? Nobody's opposed or abstained? All right, thank you. Communications from elected officials, boards, committee staff, reports, correspondence, and announcements. Counsel Mendez?
Thank you, President Penn. Just a quick announcement from the Appointments Committee. The last day to get applications for ZBA, Infrastructure and Energy, will be March 15th. We're closing applications for those two boards. And of course, for any other board, get your applications in. Thank you.
And applications can be found on the Town Council website? Okay, webpage?
Webpage.
Great. No, you're not. All right, anybody else? Counsel Neary?
Thank you, Madam President. Just kind of a circle back, you know, it was a little, there were some things going on earlier, and I just don't want the actions of Lieutenant Riley and our police force, our acting chief, really go without, you know, another mention. It's actually remarkable in a way that there was no, you know, loss of life or injury. So, we're really fortunate, and I just wanted to kind of shout that out as well, again.
Thank you. Yes, Counsel Starr?
Can I make a suggestion? Can we move up to item 0099? Because we have three staff members here who work all day. I just, that was just a suggestion.
Yeah, we're still in communications, we haven't gotten there, but when we get there, we will. No, we're not done. I have, I have a few announcements to make. All right. So, notes from the wheelhouse. So, regarding the special meeting last week, I've had a number of positive comments about how educational it was. I thank everybody for their support for watching and submitting questions. Particular note was hearing from the water districts. Everybody really enjoyed the fact that they were in the room together. I think they don't frequently get together, all of them. So, I think they liked hearing from them, as did we. As I mentioned before, there will be subsequent workshops. We heard at public comment tonight that people believe there is a good need for that. We're going to address wastewater, surface, and coastal resources, and PFAS, PFAS, and other contaminants. But taking Mr. Mendez and others' input regarding assuring we disseminate facts and not misinformation, we're in the process of identifying subject matter experts on the subject of dielectric fluids, gases, and substation safety in general. And we heard again tonight that there is such a demand for that. So, we're going to either add that to the PFAS workshop, or we're going to carve out another date for a workshop on this topic only, substations only. So, the next workshop is scheduled for April 11th. Same rules apply. Because of our limit on capacity in this room, no public will be admitted because we can't discriminate on who comes in and who can't come in. So, please submit your questions in advance by email on noon, by noon on April 10th, and we will read them on your behalf. If you send us statements, we're not going to read your statements. If you send us questions, we'd be happy to read your questions. Okay? Please, yeah. So, you can watch the workshop as you do these meetings, TV Channel 8 and 1072, or you can stream. And later on this evening, as we've heard, the Town Council will hopefully vote to establish five subcommittees. Three out of the five committees are designed to include members of the public as working/voting members of these committees. Councilors that are interested in serving on these committees should submit your name and the committee you're interested in serving on to Cynthia Level by March 28th. Members of the public who are interested in serving on one of the three committees that include public members should complete the subcommittee application, and there's a draft of one like right here. It's only a single page, nothing really big, but we'd love you to complete one of those. And that's going to be online at the Town Council page probably by Monday. We're hoping to make it interactive so that you could actually fill it out online and then just submit it. But you also can do it the old-fashioned way and print it and fill it out and submit it, fax it, scan it, email it, any way you want to get here. So, we need the public to submit their applications by March 28th also. All subcommittees will be in compliance with open meeting law, which means meetings will be posted, minutes will be taken, and public comments will be welcome at all committees, regardless of whether they have publics as members or not. All right? And even though we have heard many thanks extended to the chief and BPD for their fabulous execution and management of what could have been a very dangerous and deadly event, I wish to also applaud their professionalism in carrying out an operation that resulted in an outstanding outcome, no deaths. I'm sure the family and the residents within a mile of the area are still terrified, thinking about what might have been, and I hope that the passage of time heals all in that neighborhood and elsewhere. So, thank you for your attention to that. We'll get into orders of the day, and you know what? Since the chief has already gone home, we were going to do her first, but we'll take Counsel Starr's suggestion, and we will move item number 2024.
099.
099, because we have staff here who's been working all day, and they'd love to go home at a reasonable hour. So, go right ahead.
This, thank you, thank you. This is old business, public with opening a public hearing, roll call majority, number 2024-099, amending the Code of the Town of Barnstable, Part 1, General Ordinances, Chapter 1, General Provisions, Article 1, Non-Criminal Enforcement of Violations.
Well, all righty, so, pardon me. So, it's a public hearing, and you made a motion to open in second, right? Okay. Go right ahead. Welcome.
Can you guys hear me all right?
Hi, turn on.
Please turn on. Green light on?
Yep, green light's on.
Excellent.
That sounds much better.
It sure is.
For those of you who don't know me, my name is Amy Croto. I've been working with the Natural Resources Division since 2006 as a deputy shellfish constable, and in 2016, became a shellfish constable in town. Most of the regulation, sort of fine changes that we're proposing are pertinent to the recreational shellfishery. Recreational shellfishing is a fishery of the Commonwealth, and contrary to popular local belief, towns do not have the authority to limit the number of recreational permits that are sold. In recent history, since 2017, we've added close to another 1,000 permits issued per year to recreational shellfishers. In 2017, we had around 2,600 permits that were issued. In 2023, we had close to 3,400. We were at 33,5. Our shellfish regulations are put in place to protect the sustainability of species both natural and propagated, and to protect the habitat that supports those shellfish species. When someone buys a permit, they're given a link to a physical copy or a physical copy of those regulations, along with a frequently asked question sheet that a lot of recreational shellfish novices ask, sort of on a routine basis. Notices pertaining to shellfish management decisions, maps of open and closed areas, notices regarding learned-to-shellfish opportunities offered by our shellfish program are posted on shellfish kiosks present at most town landings at our office and are also available online. As enforcement agents, we want every person recreationally shellfishing to have fun, to harvest sustainably and responsibly, and we offer educational outreach on-site when infractions occur in the form of verbal warnings and/or written warnings, depending on the gravity of the offense or offenses. All verbal and written warnings are logged in our system, and when education, verbal and written warnings, have proven ineffective in changing the behavior of a recreational permit holder with respect to protection of the shellfishery, we have the ability to issue non-criminal citations. The current fine schedule in place has not been looked at since about 2003, and is, at this point, over 20 years old. I reviewed the fine schedules for other towns, and Falmouth, Mashpee, Yarmouth, Dennis, Sandwich, Brewster, Eastham, Orleans, Wellfleet, Truro, and Province Town all had their fines available for review online. And we worked to compile a list over the course of a year that we felt would update fines for recreational violations that are also sort of commensurate with how other towns address those types of violations. Most of them, I said, are specific to the recreational fishery. You will notice that one of them is specific to river herring harvesting, that is because in 2003, there was a three-year moratorium put in place on the harvest of river herring that was extended for another three years to 2006, extended another three years to 2009, and then became a permanent moratorium within the state of Massachusetts, still stands. So, we can't have really regulations speaking to a closed day, as there are no days to harvest herring if you are not a tribal member. The other regulation that doesn't speak to recreational shellfishing is for commercial possession of seed in excess of 5%. Prior to this proposed change, it was all looped together, commercial and recreational fines were the same. The commercial limits are much larger than the recreational limits, so to be in excess of 5% seed is more egregious a violation than on the recreational end, so we felt it was more appropriate. So we felt it was more appropriate to leave the fine for commercial seed violations at $300 and to make one for recreational seed violations at 100. Does anyone have any questions?
Council Schnepp.
Thank you, President Penn, and thank you, Amy. The elimination of taking scallops, is that because they're considered shellfish, so you don't have to have that as a specific fine?
Yeah, yep. We, 40, 50 years ago, we had a decent scallop fishery in this town. We don't, and unless we magically figure out how to put eagrass beds all over everywhere, which nobody's really had much luck with to date, it's likely to stay that way. So we didn't feel it needed to be a separate line item anymore, and that it could be, you know, treated in a more general sense.
Other questions? I actually had a quick question. I was just curious how, why you have a penalty here for taking scallops without a well-defined annual growth ring? Aren't growth, why just scallops? Why not cohogs and et cetera?
Because scallops are weird. So at the size of one inch hinge width on a cohog, it's a suitable size for them to have an opportunity to spawn or to make more baby cohogs. Scallops are a very short-lived animal. They only live two years. They don't have an opportunity to spawn until they have lived at least a year. And at the end of that year, they put down a well-defined hard growth line. So presence of that raised annual growth line shows that that animal has had an opportunity to spawn.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Go right ahead.
Thank you, President Penn. Just a recommendation, especially with the influx of people that have moved off Cape in the last five, 10 years, especially people who live on the shoreline. Maybe when we get new residents, you should send them a letter about Aboriginal and tribal rights, because I get a lot of calls from tribal members, especially members of the town, that people don't understand what their Aboriginal rights are. So it might be a good idea, either through the town or maybe the town manager can tell you how to do it. When we get new residents who happen to buy waterfront property, they have to be, you know, cognizant of what the rights of tribal members are. So that might be something you should maybe work with the town manager to make sure they at least get a letter or a flyer informing them of those rights.
Sure, I mean, yep.
Oh, you can comment.
Yeah, I would just say, as somebody who honestly tries to work very closely with the tribe, I'm currently slated to be part of their Earth Day celebration. It's not just shellfishing that people don't understand tribal rights around. It's hunting, it's the taking of herring, it's a lot of different things. So one way that we mitigate that is literally feet on the ground, because if there's one thing that I know, as somebody who posts lots of signs all over town, people don't necessarily read what you give them, but when you stop and have a conversation with them to educate them, it's more likely to resonate with them.
I mean, that's even better. I don't want to suck resources out of you. I'm just trying to make it easy for you, that's all.
Thank you.
So that was the wonderful Amy Croto. I'm glad that some of you who haven't met her got an opportunity to hear her passion about our shellfisheries here in town. I'm going to keep this fairly brief. I'm here, Director of Natural Resources. My name is Nina Coleman. I'm going to just speak briefly to the dog regulation or the dog control fine proposal. With me tonight is Charlie Lewis, who's the senior animal control officer and has 30-plus years of experience with dog control in the town of Barnstable. So our fine schedule that we're proposing tonight has not been substantially changed since 1992. The regulations, the dog control regulations were extremely stale, and we've spent the last year and a half going through that and trying to bring our dog control regulations up to date. And while we were doing that, we addressed our fines as well. We looked at our neighboring communities to see what they were, what they had for fines for dog control violations, and sort of matched what those folks were doing in our neighboring towns. And I will say citations and fines, which are noncriminal, are our last resort. As a team, we work for, we work towards education. We have, as Amy spoke to, we have, we go to verbal violations first, which are logged so that we have a working record of how many times we spoke to a resident, and then we'll go to a citation. So I think it's a fair change. It's minor. Part of what we did when we looked at other communities and also when we vetted this fine schedule through the town manager hearing, we got a couple of comments about having a two-tier system. In other words, you get a $25 fine for, say, dog on a beach in the wrong time of year, and then second violation would be a $50 fine. So we incorporated that into our proposal as well. So Charlie and I are here to answer any questions that you might have about this section.
Anybody have any questions about the dog regulations? No? I thought we'd have five hands that went up, right? Nada? Okay. Thank you. Nice job. What?
Yeah, we're going to ask now.
This is a public hearing. Anybody from the public who wishes to speak? No? Okay, all right. Nobody online?
There is no one online.
Thank you. So we'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Second. Thank you. This is roll call to close the public hearing? No, just to close? All those in favor of closing the public hearing? Right? Anybody opposed? Okay. So. Yes. Of course. Council Bloom.
Charlie Kel, Charlie Lewis out there. There's a man that should be applauded for all his years of work here in the town. I've been watching, I mean, we knew each other from when we were kids. We went to the old Hyannis Elementary School together before it was even Hyannis East, and I've seen Charlie driving around for decades in the van, and, you know, this, this man, this man is something else. He's, he's been steadfast and, and his expertise is unfathomable. Thank you, Charlie.
I can't tell you how many skunks he's removed from my yard.
Yeah, I bet.
God bless him. Okay, so, having no other discussion, commendations, et cetera, we will have a roll call majority on item number 2024-099, amending the code of the town, general ordinances, blah, 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 which we just discussed. Janet?
Councilors. Bloom?
Say yes.
So.
We're voting on this.
No, we're voting.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Just say yes.
Yes.
Verdic?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Crow?
Yes.
Levek?
Yes.
Ludkey?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Penn?
Yes.
Schnepp?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Tamish?
Yes.
12 yes.
Thank you, and thank you. Have a good night. Okay, we're going to go back to our regular agenda. Council Mendez, item 2024-093.
Thank you, President Penn. This is item number 2024-093, old business, public hearing, roll call, two-thirds of the full council. Appropriation and loan order in the amount of $30 million, $900,000 for the purpose of funding sewer infrastructure improvements.
Second. Okay, so the public hearing is already open, and it was continued from the last meeting, so we don't need to vote on that. So we have Mr. Santos.
Good evening, Dan Santos, Director of Public Works. As you may recall, in January 18th meeting, we had a presentation, so we did present in detail on this item, but I will just summarize for you the item. So in 2021, the town council voted to approve design funds, and in 2022, construction funds for sewer expansion along the Park City Wind Project Route from Craigville Beach, Craigville Beach Road north to Shoot Flying Hill Road. Working in conjunction with the wind project would minimize construction impacts and result in savings to the town's project from road reconstruction and paving. Design funds were also secured for the Route 28 West Sewer Expansion Project that would install the backbone of the sewer project heading west from Finney's Lane to Route 149. The Centerville Village Sewer Expansion Project along the Park City Wind Duck Bank Route was approved for 2023 by the State Revolving Fund to commence in the fall of 2024, which included an associated 25% subsidy from the Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund. The Route 28 West Project was listed, is listed on the 2024 SRF project list with construction commencing in the fall of 2025. Because the Park City Wind Project has been delayed to a date uncertain, the DPW did not want to proceed with our sewer expansion project in Centerville Village, which would result in multiple construction efforts when eventually the Park City Wind Project entered the construction phase. Consequently, we have developed a hybrid project that we are calling the Centerville Village Sewer Expansion North Phase, which will commence in the fall of 2024. And in this project, we will install new sewers on Route 28 from Finney's Lane to Old Stage Road, new sewers on Old Stage Road from Route 28 to Shoot Flying Hill Road, new sewers on Shoot Flying Hill Road from Old Stage Road to Service Road, new sewers on Finney's Lane from Route 28 to Main Street, and three new pump stations, two on Shoot Flying Hill Road and one at Mother's Park location. DPW will continue to design, the design for the Centerville Village Sewer Expansion South Phase and bring that forward for construction funding when there is a more certainty around the Park City Wind Project's schedule. And all this approach maintains momentum and flexibility, is consistent with the comprehensive wastewater management plan, and continues work on the vital backbone which will convey wastewater back to the wastewater treatment plant in Hyannis. The financing of this project will be provided by borrowing from the State Revolving Loan Fund. The subsequent payback of the loan will be included in future annual operating budgets with the revenue source, for the loan payback being the dedicated resources within the Sewer Construction and Private Way Improvement Fund, accounting for the anticipated 25% principal subsidy from the Cape Cod and Islands Water Protection Fund, and the anticipated low financing rate through the revolving loan fund, the estimated annual loan payment is approximately $1,020,000 for 30 years. Thank you.
Are there any questions? We already had this presentation in much more detail at the last meeting. Council Ludkey.
Not really a question, but a comment. Dan, I think that's really smart. I love the way you're able to pivot and continue to move forward so that, you know, when that Park City is resolved, you could certainly take it from whatever route it comes up to Mother's Park. So I think that's brilliant. So thank you for being flexible and keeping it going.
Thank you.
Council Star.
Thank you very much. So Mr. Santos, so we're going to start searing up Shoot Flying Hill Road toward the Service Road before, that's also the cable route, isn't it, for Park City?
Yes.
Okay, so we're going to, we're just going to go ahead and start.
Yes, and they'll follow after us. But because that's a difficult area for construction, it's going to take probably two years just to put the sewers in Shoot Flying Hill Road. So it's good for us to get a head start.
And then it'll take two more years to put in the cables and?
Well, no, it's, they won't take that long, but it's, because it's a different process, different depths, it is, they actually move very quickly.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Comments? Council Tamish.
The two projects are going to be separate, but you're not going to do the final coding for it to be taken up again. I mean, is there going to try to be some coordination still, or?
Yes. Hopefully, the project comes right behind us, and we can get away with a, you know, base coat or a temporary finish. But if it's going to be a while, we may have to pay, put a, put a more permanent pavement surface. It really is going to depend on how much wear and tear the construction takes on the road and what the surface looks like. Ultimately, we want to have a safe road, and if we have to pave it, then we'll have to seek additional funds to do that. But our thinking at this point is that we won't have to do that.
But if it came down to that, they would be responsible for repaving it after their work.
Yes, that's correct.
You all sit. Everybody sat here? Okay, this is a public hearing. Is anybody here to speak to about or ask questions on this $30.9 million item? Nobody online? Okay. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Second. All those in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, so now we have to vote by roll call, saying there's no other questions or comments. We need a two-thirds vote of the council to do this.
Counselor, councilors. Verdic?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Crow?
Yes.
Levek?
Yes.
Ludkey?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Penn?
Yes.
Schnepp?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Tamish?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
12 yes.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item is, we already did, nope. Council Levek.
Thank you. Thank you, President Penn. This is old business. I'd like to open a public hearing, roll call, majority vote. Item number 2024-096 is an appropriation order in the amount of $500,000 to fund disposal costs of the Solid Waste Division of the Department of Public Works as written.
Second. All right, so we need to open the public hearing. All those in favor of opening public hearing? Anybody opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Santos.
Thank you. The Solid Waste Division operates the transfer station and recycling center. The services provided at the transfer station are funded by fees that are charged to users and sticker holders. And as of this year, there will no longer be sticker holders, as we're going to a plate reader system, starting with the new fiscal year. These fees are used to cover the costs associated with operating and disposing of items accepted from users and currently sticker holders. The appropriated budget is calculated using estimated material totals and expected disposal costs. Changes to activity levels can impact the budget in various ways. In fiscal year 2024, the transfer station experienced increases to the amount of hard-to-recycle items. Those are things like mattresses, refrigerators, electronic equipment, tires, et cetera, and construction and demolition material disposed of at the facility. This unexpected increase has significantly increased the cost of disposal incurred by the division. Preparation of the budget for fiscal year 24 did anticipate increases to material being disposed. However, the Solid Waste Division charges fees for disposal of a multitude of items and offers stickers for fee to residents. The fees charged are calculated to cover the cost of disposal for these materials that are dropped off at the facility. And due to increase in materials disposed of, we are experiencing, we are experiencing an increase in the associated revenue, which will cover the increase in disposal costs. There are adequate cash reserves to cover the cost of this appropriation. Current certified cash reserves are $1,904,664. The reserves used to fund this appropriation will be replenished at the close of fiscal year 2024, as revenue is higher than budget estimates due to the increase in activity levels. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Council Tamish.
Two quick questions. The swap shop, will it ever be back?
It will.
It will.
It will.
Good news.
I just got the proposal today, and I'm looking it over, and so this spring, we hope to have that reopened. And I will provide that information as to the hours and details once I finalize them.
Second issue somewhat related, recycling. I was reading that a significant number of the loads of recycling are now rejected because of cross-contamination. I mean, is that a fact down here?
Not, not with ours, because we source separate at the facility. You frequently get the cross-contamination issues where they have a single source, where it all gets thrown together, paper and metal and glass, and sometimes with paper. But right now, we're not recycling newspaper because we don't have
But right now, we're not recycling newspaper because we don't have a vendor. Cardboard is the only one to worry about, but we have good luck with that. Our loads have not been rejected, at least I can't recall the last time one was rejected.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Comments? Counsel Starr.
Any word on the bottle redemption? Is that something we need to rethink about in terms of maybe not having people responsible for a month, but maybe a shorter amount of time or?
Well, we do have groups signed up and they'll be starting in the next couple of weeks, so.
Excellent.
It's a little tough in the winter, but.
Thanks.
Yeah.
You got your answer?
I got my answer, yeah.
Great. Anybody else? No? Anybody from the public? Please approach.
As a follow-up to the question about the swap shop, you're the one I need to ask. Will there be a fee to just get into the, into the transfer station for purposes of the swap shop? Because there never was before, so I don't know whether that's going to be something different.
Does anyone have an answer?
Sure. The town council several years ago made the decision that to utilize the facility, you have to purchase an annual sticker now, pay the fee for the plate reader. The only thing that we allow people to use without having paid that fee is the quarterly hazardous waste collection, household hazardous waste collection, and any resident is able to participate in that.
Okay, thank you. Anybody online?
There is no one online.
Nobody online. Any other public comment? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close public comment. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Anybody opposed? All righty. You guys ready to vote? Okay. Roll call to approve.
Counselors. Clark?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Levesque?
Yes.
Lutke?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Penn?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Tamish?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
12 yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Counsel Tamish, 2024-161.
I move to open a public hearing for a roll call majority full council on item number 2024-161, a supplemental appropriation order for fiscal year 2024, Barnstable Police Department, the amount of $35,000 to fund consulting services and overtime costs for the purpose of exploring the removal of the Barnstable Police Department from civil service.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of opening the public hearing signify by saying aye? Okay, anybody opposed? No. Unanimous. Thank you. By the way, just before you start, we were going to move this to the front of the agenda because the chief was here, and I know she was pretty exhausted and wanted to go home early, but they sent her home anyway because our public comment took up a little bit of time. So we have Bill Cole.
Thank you, President Penn. Vice President Tamish, members of the council. Bill Cole, Human Resources Director. I'd like to come forward to the rationale for this item, pinch hitting for the chief, as you said. A little bit of a background, in 1937, the town meeting voted to place certain positions of the town under this new-fangled idea called civil service. So that was done. And over time, it has evolved, and we are now looking and exploring options of whether or not we should remove our police department from civil service. So the request before you this evening is not whether or not we should, it's to appropriate funds so that the police department can start the work, to look at the process, and consider options on whether or not we would come out of it. So we've had discussions with our police unions, and then coming out of those discussions and contract negotiations, there was a commitment by all parties to explore this. So we're looking for an appropriation of $35,000 to fund consulting services and also pay for overtime that's going to be incurred by members of the department that will be working on working groups, looking at this removal from civil service.
Great. Okay, so questions from counselors? Counsel Schnep.
Thank you, President Penn. Thank you, Director Cole. Do we have any estimated timeline on this process and when there might be a recommendation on this matter?
I think it's tough to pin it down, but I think we're hoping to do it sometime in the summer. But it just depends on the progress of the working groups as they go through this, because there is a lot of things that need to be unpacked as they go through this. But as soon as they are ready, they bring it forward, we would bring it before the council.
Knowing that we have a vacancy and our police chief being ably filled by acting chief, Jeanne Chalice, will this discussion have any impact on that process of hiring, officially hiring our police chief?
At this point, they're looked at as two separate items. So the timing may come together, but at this point, they're on two separate tracks, but eventually they could end up merging into one. But this is for the department.
Yeah, this is for rank and file, not the chief. Chief is a separate issue. Other questions?
My, thank you. My question is, is it just police that are going to be looking at this issue?
Yes, it's going to.
Within the, in the department?
Yes, so there is going to be members of both police unions that are going to be working, having working groups looking at all the different facets that we have to consider if we're going to come out of civil service.
Okay, and you'll keep an eye on that?
Both of them.
Okay, good, thank you.
Yes.
That is a commitment.
Yes.
Counsel Lutke.
Yeah, I'm just curious, does this apply to any of the other departments in terms of coming out of civil service, or is this particular, particularly advantageous for the police to do this?
Actually, the police are the only department that are in, that are in civil service. So back in 1937, I think there were some others, but over time, with the change in the form of government and a bunch of things, that the only department now that is in civil service is the police department.
Counsel Tamish.
More of a comment than a question, as someone who worked with civil service and had to negotiate the bureaucracy and some of the arcane rules that they have, I've advocated this for years and it's overdue. Thank you.
There's a vote of confidence and support. Any other comments, questions? No. Public, is there anybody from the public who'd like to speak to this? This is a public hearing? No? Online?
No one online.
Nobody online. All right. We'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. All those in favor? We missed the motion. He made a motion. Chris made a second. Now we're voting. All right. Sorry about that. All right. So now we'll vote, roll call, majority for this item number 2024-161 to approve.
Counselors. Crowe?
Aye.
Levesque?
Yes.
Lutke?
Yes.
Mendez?
Absolutely, yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Penn?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Tamish?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
12 yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for staying late and filling in. All right, on to new business. Counsel Lutke.
Okay, thank you. This is new business. It may be acted upon by a majority vote. It's item 2024-166, resolve establishing certain ad hoc advisory committees. And resolve that in accordance with section 241-8 of chapter 241 of the Town Administrative Code, the town council does hereby establish the ad hoc advisory committees listed below to assist the town council in carrying out the council's responsibilities. The committees shall be limited to the purposes noted below and shall serve only for the specified time periods, provided the time periods may extended by the town council president at the request of a committee chair if additional time is needed to complete the work of the committee. In accordance with Town Council Rule 11A, the president of the town council should designate the members of these committees as further described below. Committees shall have an odd number of members the committees shall be subject to and shall comply with open meeting law. All committee meetings shall include a period for public comment. The committee chairs shall provide regular reports to the town council at town council meetings. And I'll just read the titles of the committees since we've had such discussion about this. Committee to review town council rules and the town code. Committee to review the purpose, composition, functionality, and effectiveness of the standing committees of the town. Committee to review and assess zoning and review the town's use of regulatory agreements. Committee to assess and recommend strategies for housing creation within the town. And the committee to recommend policy with respect to the town's acquisition and disposition of property and development of town-owned property.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Attorney Nobur.
Good evening, counselors. Karen Nobur, Town Attorney. I actually don't think I need to add anything. I think that pretty much covered everything that's in the rationale. I was going to suggest that when you're ready to vote, you may want to vote each of the committees separately, and then you would need a motion at that time to do that, and then we would number each of those votes, whatever the number is, like A, B, C, so that we have a number for each vote, if that's what you choose to do.
Okay, so it's all right for us to have generic conversation and discussion and deliberation about this all over the place, but then when everybody's satisfied that that's done, we'll just take them one at a time, is basically what you're saying.
If that's what you want to do, then someone would make a motion to basically bifurcate the vote into, maybe not bifurcate, because there's five of them, but divide it up into five separate votes.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. Understood? Is that the way you want to do it, or you want to do it in one vote? Separate?
Separate.
Okay. We'll do separate. Why not? Nice and clean that way for everybody. Okay.
So when you're ready, you'll do a motion when you get to that point?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, this is general discussion now. Comments? Counsel Neary.
Thank you, Madam President. Actually, my thoughts were in light of kind of the procedure and things that have gone on tonight. This is, this is really, shame on me, I didn't pick this up in the agenda, but I would like to make a motion to postpone item number 2024-166 to a date certain of April 4th, 2024. That would be my motion.
Second.
Do you want to give us a little rationale on that?
Absolutely, Madam President. Thank you. Again, shame on me, I didn't pick this up in the agenda. I would be much more comfortable if there was a conversation not only with my fellow counselors individually and with the leadership of the council, just in terms of maybe a deeper understanding of how these committees would be established, an understanding of would each committee make up counselors, or will there be multiple counselors on multiple committees, those type of things? I think there's a lot of things that kind of need to be fleshed out, and I think a conversation with leadership would certainly help, help me understand the impact of these. I'm not saying I'm for them or against them, it's irrelevant, I just think that this has really come on us suddenly, frankly. And I think not only getting to know the leadership and my fellow counselors' positions on some of these thoughts and ideas, but also it will give us the opportunity to engage the people that live in our precincts and flesh out maybe some thoughts, as well as give us an opportunity to maybe have conversations with people in our precincts on who might be interested in these, in these committees. Again, that way we can have a robust conversation, have a robust idea of engaging the public as well on this, this item. Thank you.
With all due respect, I've, I announced this at the very beginning in January, that I plan to create some town council subcommittees, that they would consist of a combination of counselors and members of the public. I gave some brief description based on the event for MMA that we went to on December 9th, saying that we had heard from other towns, Counsel Lutke spoke to this before, that had some town council subcommittees, and we thought that that would be a good idea for certain things. And there have been several references to that, so I think I said, and I've announced several times, that I wanted these committees to be formulated and populated by the end of March, because some of them, if you would read in their definitions, have, have, like the housing committee that Counselor Schnep did the description of and set deadlines on, et cetera, that would sunset or come up with their recommendations by September 30th, et cetera. There's been some, some of that stuff I think might suffer if we, if we don't move on this accordingly. So if there's a committee or two that you'd like to wait and get the word out to people, I mean, I've announced it at my, my notes from the wheelhouse at almost every single town council meeting that we've had since. So I don't know why it's come on you so suddenly.
If I may, I mean, I haven't had a conversation with anybody in leadership regarding this, nor have I had a conversation with anybody on the council regarding any of this. So again, blame it on me, maybe I, you know, didn't pick it up. But these certainly are major items involved in the town. I think that they're important. I just think that in my particular case, it's sudden, and I think maybe the, maybe the month-long wait on this could be too long, that could be discussed, I get that, but I don't see any reason why, why there couldn't be a pause so we can kind of, at least I can absorb what we're looking at here. I definitely would like to know how this, how the committees will be picked, set up, what expertise we have in the town that will be involved with this in terms of citizens? It, to me, again, it's just, it's sudden, and I apologize if I seem unprepared, but I will be the first to admit that I am unprepared to, to make a decision on these.
Anybody else want to comment on the motion that was on the floor to delay this to April 4th? Counsel Bloom.
How about voting for the, the two March 31st and, and then wait until April 1st, as Counsel Neary suggested, for the rest of them?
Say that again?
We have two committees that are due March 31st. How about if we vote for them tonight? And then put the rest of the committees off so that Counsel Neary's?
So you're saying there's two committees that are supposed to report back a year from now, 12 months from now, so we should?
It's 12 months from now. Oh, I thought it was one month from now. I'm sorry.
No, no.
Sorry.
It's 2025.
Okay, okay.
Counsel Lutke.
Yes, I, I think there's been clarity on these ad hoc subcommittees, and I know I did mention it, and I know only, only a few of us, four of us, went to that MMA training where it was abundantly clear that this was something that was missing in Barnstable. I think we're already behind on executing these. I think they're very clearly stated. I think Counsel Neary brings up a good point about staffing them, and I think you mentioned
I think Counsel Neary brings up a good point about staffing them, and I think you mentioned that in terms of people were going to apply for them, just as they apply for other committees. I think delaying it, I'm not sure what we're going to accomplish in delaying it, I'm not seeing the rationale for that myself. I'd be very comfortable voting tonight, so that's my position.
Counsel Tamish.
A question for Counselor Neary. Two of the proposed committees are strictly councilors. I can certainly see your question about perhaps appointment of the public, but it was my impression it was going to be going through the Appointment Committee. Is that correct, or is that going to be appointed by the President?
Yes.
By the President?
They're all appointed by the President.
All appointed by the President. So perhaps if we did bifurcate the vote, if people were not comfortable with voting for all five, the two that compose strictly of councilors, particularly the one that kind of near and dear to my heart, review the Town Council Rules and the Town Code, there are several inconsistencies there and conflicting sections, you know, perhaps vote on each one individually, if that would ally some of your concerns.
Other comments? Counsel Mendez.
To be honest, I don't feel comfortable voting on a couple of these tonight. Assesses in zoning, housing strategy, and acquisition. I think we have some internal house cleaning to do. I think this council, and no fault of your own, but I think this council is starting to put too much power in the chair. That started with, a couple weeks ago, with the chair deciding who can zoom or not. I'm getting very uncomfortable with that, and after this letter tonight, valid or not, I think we owe it to the public to take a step back and maybe look at these things and the way people are going to be appointed to these boards and committees. That's my feeling. I don't think we should vote tonight. I don't feel comfortable voting tonight, and I will not support this tonight.
Is it same way, exact same system you were appointed to the Appointments Committee? It's been customary for this board forever?
Yes, but now we're starting to take on more committees. Now we're starting to do new things, and like I said, I just want to review it, especially with what came to light tonight. I don't feel comfortable.
Counsel Clark.
Thank you very much, President. I am in favor of these committees, these subcommittees, and I did attend the MMA meeting, coaching new councilors, and we had a chance to see what other, how other city councils do their business. I have been uncomfortable for a while with inconsistencies in the code, and I think it needs a review by folks who are invested in our town, our elected officials, to go through the code and see where the inconsistencies are. I am familiar with the Town's Shellfish Committee, and it's stale. It has the Town Council approving aquaculture licenses, and years ago, that authority was granted to the Town Manager, but the code has not been updated. And there are some committees, I sit on the appointments with Counselor Mendez, Bloom, Burdick, and Turkelson, and through our discussions, looking to recruit new members for the standing committees that we have, we realize that there are some committees that haven't met in a long time, which is why we suggested that those be put aside, so that folks aren't showing interest in a committee that is not functioning anymore to benefit the public. So those two particular committees, I think, have work to do and should have been done a long time ago. So I do see urgency in looking through it, and winter time is a good time to be doing homework like this, going through the Town Code and especially the committees of the town, seeing who's up to date, who's fully appointed, who's putting in their minutes, who has staff support. I think that takes a while to go through our 43 committees, not only to appoint them, but to see if they are doing the work that was originally intended. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Counselor Levesque.
I kind of echo Counselor, I'm sorry, Vice President Tamish's, I do believe, and I think that would be great, I think the first two committees, you know, cleaning up that inconsistency, ambiguity, and then, you know, the purpose, that's honestly something that I've always kind of struggled with, is these committees, you have these people have these passions, but at the same time, where's the effectiveness? Is it having, you know, again, is it, not worthy the staff report, but is it really, what's the task at hand? And I'm glad leadership is, take this on, it's an arduous task, you know, March 31, 2025, some people might look like, isn't that a long period of time? No, we have a lot of committees, and we need, and just like, for example, it got brought up tonight, and I know all the people left about it, but the Housing Committee, why aren't we meeting? Why aren't we doing this? Honestly, there's quorum issues, and there aren't people necessarily volunteering to be part of the Housing Committee. On top of that, we do not have a housing coordinator. We've tried to hire a housing coordinator, and we had one, but they, I think they went to Chatham, you know what I mean? And trying to find those qualified people, it's tough to staff this. Now, saying all that, looking at the last three committees, these committees are going to be staffed, I would assume, by the Planning Department, that's already working on a local comprehensive plan committee, a housing production plan, those types of things. I do think that up to, you know, that it's up to four people that can be appointed by the President without having some sort of parameters of what those qualifications will be by the President. I do agree with Counselor Mendez, that's a lot of power, that's a lot of up to four. I was part of a committee, I was a part of that regulatory in zoning when I first became a counselor, and there was one at-large member, and that at-large member was a banker and a former counselor. So, and it was one person in, on that committee, not four. So, and they didn't actually have voting rights, they just were there to have input. So I am curious to, I just, I do feel a little bit uncomfortable with how, again, this could really put a big burden on the staff, and also too, the, you know, because we had an asset management group, and I think that kind of reflects that, that last committee there, number five, and then moving over to the regulatory review, I think that's something that we could do right here on the dais. I think if there's concerns by leadership in regards to the Form-Based Code, that somehow it needs to be reassessed or fixed, other councils have voiced the same thing, let's do it right on the dais, and let's bring it up as an item on the agenda, and let's educate, because I think there's a number of councilors, quite honestly, who don't really know what the Form-Based Code is, and it would be a great educational piece to know what the new downtown zoning is, why it was put in place, what the process was of putting in place, if that's what we want to look at. And then as far as the regulatory, President Penn, there's probably not anybody on this dais that knows more about the regulatory agreement than you do, so I think that would be, again, a great time to educate this council, these 13 councilors, about the regulatory agreement. I know there's been issues as far as enforcement that goes, and I would like that to be done here. I would, you know, again, I'm not trying to force my opinion, I just think it would be my recommendation, or my, I guess it is my opinion, that we, again, talk about this here, and not another meeting that the public's going to make time to get to, you know what I mean? And I think if it's that important, and it deals with what we're trying to do on two big zoning pieces, that we do it right here at Town Council. So I would be of, again, back full circle, Vice President Tamish, voting on those two first ones, and then maybe holding off on the last three. Thank you. Thank you, President Penn.
There's a motion and a second on the floor, oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Crowe.
An amendment to the motion on the floor?
You can only amend it, that's what I've just been looking at, to a different date.
That's the only amendment you can make?
Yeah, that's what I've been reading.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Well, the amendment on the floor, as I recall, is to move the creation, move this entire item to April 4. That's the amendment, I mean, that's the motion on the floor.
It's to postpone this item until April 4.
Yeah.
That's right.
So, do we want to vote on this now, rather than discussing each committee, and then we can move on to other discussions?
I think I'm going to offer a motion regarding that.
No, I think you've got to vote on the motion.
Can I amend the motion, if I'm asking for a different date?
You may.
Okay. I'd like to amend Counselor Neary's motion to move these to the next meeting, March 17, or whatever.
It's March 21.
March 21.
March 21.
Is there a second to her amendment?
Second, second.
So the vote is now on whether to amend Counselor Neary's motion to change the date.
Right. All those in favor, is there any discussion on the amendment?
Just to be clear.
Counsel Crowe.
The amendment that Mr. Neary, Counsel Neary had, all we're doing is mending that to have an earlier date. Instead of the 4th of the next month, it's the 21st, which is our next meeting.
Right, so you would take a vote on whether to amend Counselor Neary's motion, and if that passes, then you would take a vote on the motion as amended.
Okay. Counselor Mendez.
Yeah, I would like that, because at least we have a little bit of time to talk about it, hash things out, and I think that's a great idea, you know, moving it to, what, Counselor Shetland?
The 21st.
Yeah, I like that.
Counsel Starr.
If we vote on this now, does it stop what we're, our discussion?
No, we're just voting on the amendment.
Voting on the amendment, okay. Go ahead.
But we're voting to move it.
No, we're voting to amend his motion to move, yeah. All those in favor of the amendment to move the deliberation of item number 2024-166 to March 21?
So it's two, it's a vote to approve amending Counselor Neary's motion?
Right.
Okay. Okay. So now the motion before you is to actually postpone the meeting as amended to the 21st?
Are we ready to vote, or is there more discussion on this? Counsel Starr.
I think, I'm thinking, looking ahead two weeks, is there, if we get into discussion about who's going to choose the five councilors, are there some options we could, other than just leaving it in your hands, are there some other options we could come up with in the next couple of weeks?
Well, if you, I'd like you to answer that, because I'm not supposed to be deliberating on this, but it's kind of...
In the resolve here?
Yeah, the Town Council Rules provide that for ad hoc committees, it's the Town Council President that appoints the members, and then it's the Administrative Code that says by majority vote of the council, you establish the committee. So that's why the vote before you is to establish the committee, and then the President would appoint the members under the Town Council Rules.
Yeah, I'm not trying to usurp power, I mean, this is what it says we should do.
Is there a way where we could put our first, second, and third choices down and send it to the President?
I mean, you can certainly, you, well...
I'm unclear of his question.
I think he wants to give you input as to your appointments, is that correct? Or is this, are these committees that you want to be on?
Yeah, if I gave a list of, you know, three committees I wanted to be on, first, second, and third choice.
Absolutely.
Yeah, you could do that.
Absolutely. You submit them to our staff administrator, and she communicates that to me, she puts all the information together, and I make the appointments.
Did we ever take a vote?
Point of order, I think we need to vote on the motion that's before us.
Right, so you now have a motion to postpone this agenda item, the discussion and the vote on this agenda item to March 21. That's the item, that's the motion as amended, that's what's before you.
Okay, and this would be by majority vote, correct?
Yes.
So all those in favor of moving this item to March 21, as amended, raise your hand. Oh, you voted too? Well, I'm the only one opposed then.
Okay, so it's moved.
All right, so, yes, Counsel Crowe.
Just a question about the 21st. Say we're going to do this tonight, but those will be discussions probably also about whether we want to do some of these committees now, or is everybody pretty happy with doing them all the next week, or will there be maybe...
Yeah, the agenda item just got moved, so the whole thing's moved. Yeah, that's done. The question I guess I have is so that we don't have a repeat at the 21st meeting, what kind of discussion, I guess, are you all looking to have at that meeting so that you could take a vote? Because I just, I sort of feel like you're going to be in the same position on the 21st. So what is everyone looking for?
I won't make the motion.
Okay, all right. Okay.
Well, I have, so would, if we have five councilors and some public representatives, do they vote?
Yes.
Oh, on the committee?
On the committee.
Yeah, if they're committee members, they're committee members.
The committee members, they vote.
Yeah.
And just, have we worked out administrative help? You know, who's going to take notes for each meeting, where we're going to meet, are they going to be recorded?
Yes.
Okay, good, as long as that's worked out. Thank you.
Felicia.
Counsel Mendez.
No, for me, for me personally, I just want to have an in-depth conversation with leadership. That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. We have a workshop discussion now, it's 10 minutes of 10.
President Penn.
Yes, Counsel Clark.
Thank you very much. My understanding is with these subcommittees, they will come out with recommendations, and it comes to the full council.
Absolutely.
So eventually the authority is with us.
Absolutely. They're just doing the grunt work. Thank you. This is a very important workshop we're going to have now about public and private roads. Does anybody need a cup of coffee?
You're absolutely going to need a cup of coffee.
I don't drink coffee, so it's not me.
But if you had started at 7, this, now it would be 10:30, right?
It would be 10 of 11.
Yes.
Oh, I feel so much better now.
I'd have 11 minutes, rather than an hour and 11 minutes. All right, why don't I get going? And thank you for this opportunity. Markell's Town Manager. This is a continued discussion in the form of a workshop, relevant to private roads. I've emailed you in advance three presentations, I think, over the last two years that I've done. I think I had pointed out that perhaps if you had time to watch the one from last fall, it might be of benefit, because I'm going to do a little history and then jump right into questions that I have and assumptions that I have at this point in the town staff's effort, relevant to where we are heading with private roads. So I had suggested reviewing the September 21 workshop on this, and this is a continued discussion on policy relevant to private roads. Quick stats, we have public and private roads in town, public roads, we have 250 miles of public roads, 700 of them, a little less than 60% of our residents live on those roads. We have 200 miles of private roads, 1,100 of them, so obviously there's some of our smaller neighborhood-type roads, in most cases, not all cases, and about 40% of our residents live there. In general, our residents don't know the difference. In general, our residents don't know the difference. Unless they've encountered an issue with a problem on the road, and we've had to spend the time talking and educating. You know, they see the bus go by, they see the ambulance go by, they see it used openly by the public, and are confused when we talk about a public versus a private road. Many times, people think a private road might be like a gated road or a road that doesn't allow for access, and that's not what it is. It is a road that the legislative body of the town has never accepted. The majority of these occurred in the 70s and into the 80s. So, I really can't, I wasn't here then, so I really can't speak to the thought process that was involved as to why it proceeded this way. To give you a feeling, for the 250 miles of roads that we do maintain, you know, we spend a little under $4 million a year on our pavement management program. Our public roads are in good shape. You know, on a scale, on a academic scale of an A to an F or a solid B, and we continue to invest money in those roads. Drainage and the, the physical surface. And we do it in a, in a, looking at the useful life of the road, we do it in an appropriate manner, whether it's crack sealing, chip sealing, overlays, drainage repairs, you know, and, and then various forms of rehabilitation or reconstruction. We have a highway division, and we have an engineering division. Now, the highway division is just, just under $5 million a year, and our engineering, though it's not only focused on roads, it's at 2.6, so a portion of that is dedicated to roads. But I'll also point out to you that between public and private roads, we have, we're right behind Boston, Springfield, and Worcester as far as our roadway infrastructure in the town of Barnstable. We have a significant asset in our roadways. We also provide snow and ice response, not just for public roads, but for public and private roads. The only roads that we don't provide snow and ice primarily are roads that are restricted to the public. Otherwise, our, our town meeting voted years ago to provide those services. Private roads, 200 miles, we have a budget of $93,000 basically just to do emergency response. DPW does a great job with that money, but it is not anywhere near the amount that we need to maintain them properly. The comprehen, and I'll also point out that whether you live on a public road or a private road, you pay the same amount of taxes. I mean, and many of our residents, most, use our roads, so that asset is very important to them for many reasons. Our comprehensive financial advisory committee has been engaged in this for years and has commented and continues to comment in their annual review of the town proposed capital improvement program that further discussion at the policy level is needed regarding private roads. In the prior three workshops, we landed on a yes to the question, should we proceed with the taking of private roads? Town council said yes. Now, Counselor Schnepp has asked me many times, Mark, is there a resolve on this? Is there something? That typically is not the way that our councils have done things, but certainly at the end of this, if the council feels strongly that I, I, this is a significant issue that's been going on certainly the three-plus decades I've worked here and lived here. And so, however you would like to proceed, I will defer to our town legal staff to advise us on what type of town council action may be necessary. But I will proceed based on your direction. There's four major categories of private roads in town. There's the roads that are included in our CWMP that is part of doing an installation of a utility in a roadway. We are going to ultimately have to resurface that road. There are primary and collector roads in our community. There are private roads in our community that have participated in our temporary repair to private roads program. And there are also roads in our community that have recently received sewers, primarily the Stewart's Creek area. And then finally, there are all the remaining private roads. So, I'm going to go through each of those categories with you, and I'm going to ask you questions. And then if you say to me, you give me direction, but you say, no, I want you to come back with a formal resolve, I'll be more than happy to do that. You know, so what have we been doing since September 23rd? You know, we continue to bring, you know, we, we continue to bring forward to town council in batches easements relevant to our comprehensive wastewater management plan so that we can secure the state revolving funds that we talk about regularly. One of the requirements more recently, it wasn't when we did our last sewer expansion, it is now with the state revolving fund, is you either have to have an easement, or you have to have taken the road for that road to be eligible for those funds. Those are a critical funding source for us. It's the only way that subsidies flow into our community, okay? So, we've brought several batches before town council, and the town council has approved all of them as we've advanced with the searing. We'll continue to do that. That's what the town council directed us to do. But I have a bigger question as we move through that. We're also awaiting direction as to whether the town will commence layout and acceptance of private roads concurrent with the CWMP. That's my question. And then, I'll hold the last one to a minute. So, what I'm asking there is, right now, we bring in an easement. We're going through a policy discussion. In discussions with DPW as recent as this morning, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, this morning, I'm sorry, I was thinking it was yesterday. They said to me, that's not a very effective way to do it, Mark. The more effective way is if we're going to start laying out and accepting, let's start laying out and accepting these roads. Because we're doing all the research, it's not as much work, but we're doing all the research to do the easement, so we're going to do that. Then we're going to have to go back because after time, you have to do it all again because you're going to be looking at the abutters on the road, et cetera. So, all the research has to be done again if we do it in the future. So, ask the council, do they want us to start? You know, it'll take a little bit of time, probably more than a year, to prepare, to start to lay out and accept private roads when we're coming forward to put sewers in those roads. So, that's one of my questions. I'm going to kind of come back with similar slides at the end and talk with you about how you would like me to proceed in each of these categories I'm going to touch on. But there's also searing that we've done in the past, specifically the Stewart's Creek area, but there may be some other, you know, extensions of the sewer that we've done that are on private roads. We put down pavement on those roadways, okay? So, do you want us to go back and look and revisit that as well, okay? So, that's another discussion that we would have. These are already sewer in the ground, repaved roads that are private. Should we go back and look at laying out and accepting those in the future? What we've been doing as well is compiling lists of roads in other categories. It just isn't the CWMP and the sewer, and the fact that we're going to invest money on behalf of our residents in the restoration of that road after that sewer construction's done. And if it's on a private road, we don't know what the level of maintenance in that asset is. We do know the level of maintenance on every public road. It's not just that. It's also the 44 collector roads that we have in town that at, at a point back in 2014, the town council decided to expand the use of a stabilization fund that we had created to begin funding our searing project and to include these collector-type private roads. With a town council vote, we can utilize those funds to make an improvement to a private road that meets the criteria. And there's a specific criteria. We had to go to the state legislature to get that approval and that modification to this funding source. And so, we've, there's 44 of those roads in our community. If you're driving down them, you would never know that they're a private road. We've got my list here, you know, everything from Bragg's Lane in Barnstable Village to Willow Street in West Barnstable and 42 others in between. Why this is significant beyond the fact that they're private roads and we should be maintaining these roads, in my opinion, and it's what I would recommend to you, is that in this year's CIP, two of them have been brought forward. They're both in Marson's Mills, Old Mill, and School Street. You have your hard copy of the CIP. You can go in and read the request. It identifies this funding source as the source of funds to make these improvements. There's $20 million in this fund. The legislation allows you to make that decision affirmatively if you choose to. But my question relevant to, to this bigger issue of the 44, but specifically in FY '25, and I thought it would be better to talk about it in a workshop than to try to sort this out while we're doing the CIP during those, those budget hearings, is should we proceed that way? Or should you say to us, we want you to commence the layout and acceptance of those two roads and to put them into the public roads inventory once, once the town council has voted that affirmatively, and then to make those improvements? And to not use this specific fund that I don't think I have to say to everybody we absolutely need for the sewer expansion program, absolutely need it. And there aren't, there aren't sewers proposed at this time to go into those roadways. So, it's not like you're going to put the sewer in, and then you're going to redo the surface, and therefore, it makes sense that the two would combine and you get both done. That is not what is proposed at this time. So, that's a question for you. And then, obviously, a different timeline and would be put in as any other public road. But I can tell you that in observation, the general condition of private roads is more like a D than the public road B. In some cases, many of these are at the end of their useful life or beyond, okay? And this 44, when you look, and I'm more than happy to share the list with you, isn't absolute. It's the ones that we've gone through the legislation and the criteria and said, yeah, these meet that criteria. But if you say to me, yeah, but what about this one? We'll, we'll look at it if it's of the, you know, it's not an absolute, that's it, 44, and we can't look at anything else. On the other hand, it's got to meet the criteria if we're going to use this funding source. If not, then we have to kind of set up a logical way that we would commence in these categories moving forward with the acceptance, layout and acceptance of private roads. So, again, we're waiting further instruction on this. We didn't walk away from that last workshop with any closure on how you would like to proceed in this category. There was some discussion, I remember, you know, Counselor Mendez brought it up about looking for us to proceed, but we really didn't get the affirmative, except we got the general affirmative to proceed, but we didn't get in each category and start to say, yes, CWMP, yes, collector roads, yes, roads that have participated in the temporary repair to private road programs in the past. And then, yes, for all of the roads, and we know that there'll be different timelines for each, come back to us with what your plan is. I just like told you my conclusion, but that's, that's where I'm going with this. I do believe that we need to proceed with all of this. We also have a temporary repair to private road program in the town of Barnstable that our residents who live on private roads can come to us and basically act, ask us to act as their general contractor and go out there and rebuild the road to a degree that is considered temporary. And I think legal has advised us that you're looking at a, you know, at least a 15-year life in the definition of temporary. And many of these roads have been resurfaced, drainage has been improved. Many of them look like brand-new roads. Some of them don't. Some of them are a lesser improvement. But this is a program that's been out there. I will talk a little bit later on about the recommendations of a road committee that existed back in 1996 and 1998 that made recommendations relevant to this. And then, subsequent to that, around 2004, the town council created a roads committee made up of town councilors. Those prior ones were citizens and, and actually directors and public works commissioners. The more current roads committee was made up of town council. And between about 2004 and about 2014, maybe went a little longer, maybe went, I don't remember, going to '16, met and reviewed these issues and actually came up with the recommendation to add to those collector roads and make the request to the state legislature that we be allowed to use those sewer funds for both those collector roads and sewer. That was one of the last actions, I believe, that that group may have made. But back to this. So, we've got 23 roads. Now, from about '98 till about, till probably 2004, there were about 60 to 70 roads. I'd have to go back and look at the vote, how many they voted, but as I remember it, when you participated in the temporary repair to private roads program originally, as recommended by the '98 roads committee, when you were done, you, you, you laid out and accepted the road, and the town accepted it as public. So, the private homeowner made the investment, and then after that, capital improvement and maintenance was the town's. In 20, in, if, in, in 20, if you remember, in 2002, we went into a recession from '02 to '05. If you remember my earlier slide of how much the operating budget is for highway, we identified to our town council then that when you accept these 60 to 70 private roads, we are going to come in with an operating budget request because now we have to maintain them. And the council tabled it and referred it to a roads committee. Because, and they accepted the roads, though. They accepted the, I think it was about 70 roads. They accepted them at the time, but we never saw the money come into highway to be able to support them. And it went under review by the roads committee for about a decade. And so, here we are talking now about this. And so, I'm looking to obviously advance this, and I've already, again, kind of played my hand with you as to what I'm going to recommend at the end. But I really think that certainly those residents on those private roads who have made this type of investment, we should be looking at layout and taking of those roads as well. Some of them, though, are very limited improvements, so we might have some exceptions there. But when I get to the last slide, I'm going to make some suggestions for future topics with you. But that's basically what this is. So, we're looking for further direction as to whether the town wants us to commence a layout and acceptance of these, these roads that have participated in temporary repair to private roads program. Yeah, and then, should the town staff proceed with including of these? Should we be looking at taking these roads? And really, what I'm saying in this last one, it isn't the, I'm sorry, I miswrote this slide. It's all the other roads at this point. Should we be looking at, if it's not included in the CWMP, it's not a collector road that's private, and it hasn't participated in the temporary repair to private roads program? I told you, there's 1,100 of them. There's going to be some left. Should we be looking at the taking of? 1,100 of them, there's going to be some left. Should we be looking at the taking of those as well? That's my last question. So, given the affirmative yes in general, Mark, proceed with looking at the taking of private roads. Gave the same categories last time, but didn't get it to this level of detail. What we've been doing, I've worked with our planning department, looking at the, you know, drafting of guidelines to have a private road acceptance by the town for those ways not currently under covenant in the subdivision control laws. They're working on that. I've got some draft information that legal and engineering and myself are looking at. I continue, I brought back Roger Parsons, our former town engineer, who actually, when I was public works director, was brought in. He was a retired, you know, 30-plus years of private sector engineering, road construction, highway construction, retired here, came to work as a roads engineer, ultimately became our town engineer, intimately familiar with our roads program. So I called him up, and Roger was willing to participate. Dan Santos concurred with me that we needed the assistance, and he's been extremely helpful in helping me organize all this information. And again, has an intimate knowledge of our existing programs, whether it be pavement management or whether it be our temporary repair to private roads program. The other thing that I had said to the council that we were going to do, and we have done, is we're proceeding with the next update to our pavement reinsurance system, which is really looking at the condition of all our roads. We're going to fold the private roads into it because we've got to know what this financial obligation is. It's easy to say, "Okay, over the next 30 years, let's go forward with this." But we've got to build it in. We do five-year CIP projections. If we're going to add to our inventory of asset, we need to know the condition of the asset when we bring it in and the costs associated with it, just like everything else we do. So we are proceeding with that. And with the next update, DPW will have both the condition of our public and private roads. Right now, we do not have the condition of our private roads. So, should we proceed with the CWMP? Yes or no? I've already touched on all of these. And then, you know, so that's a big category for me because otherwise, we're proceeding with the CWMP, but we're going to be bringing in batches of easements to you. Probably will have to even if you say yes to this because I think it's going to take 12 to 18 months to start to lay these out. We're talking about surveyors and research, but legal research, and then ultimately being able to define the location of the road in a way that we can record a plan for the road, just like our other public roads would have that, and get that into place and ultimately for your approval. So, but a yes here would mean that I say to DPW, "Start laying them out, and the plan is to accept them as we come to town council to ask for the appropriation to fund these roads, and therefore, we will be SRF-eligible for those projects." Kind of a subcategory to that is we have these prior areas that have already gone out there and received new roads. So specifically the Stewart's Creek area, but there may be a couple of other roads that I need to talk to DPW about. Do we want to do the same thing Next category, allowable in special legislation. Do you want me to proceed with that? Therefore, we hold our course. You're going to have a CIP before you for two roads and probably every year here forward. I've already outlined to you that we would like to keep that for the sewer project and look to move these roads to acceptance and layout and acceptance, and then put them into the public inventory. They're going to rise to the top. You know, these are collector roads. These are primary roads in our community. And because of their condition, they're going to end up being at the top of the list of public roads to be maintained. That's just the reality of what this will be. So how do you want us to proceed there? Do you want us to proceed using the sewer and private roads fund? Or do you want us to start laying out and accepting? If that's the case, I would have DPW probably rework the CIP before you and make sure we have the money to do that. And ultimately, once taken, you don't vote on specific roads usually. It just gets rolled into the pavement management inventory. Then, what do you want me to do relevant to the temporary repair to private roads? The 23 roads that I've identified that have already gone and made that investment in our, you know, within our community? And then, how do you want me to proceed on all the others? And at this point, I'm really looking for direction because with each step, it is a significant effort. It is a policy decision, so not one that the staff would make. But I can tell you that I've talked to our public works director, and we both concur that these roads are in effect used publicly. And in many cases, there have been investments, and certainly within the areas of the CWMP or past sewer expansion, there has been new pavement put on by the town, even though residents pay a portion of it typically through a betterment or an assessment. But, and we don't know the level of maintenance that occurs on these post-investment in that asset. That is not an advisable way to manage an asset. So those are my questions, and I'll come back to them. But I'll just close with this. So what's the next workshop? I think the next workshop, depending on what you say to me next, is for us to come back with some schedules and some budgets to begin to talk with you about if you said yes in any or all of the categories, how we'd really implement this. I can only say to you that this has evolved over decades. So it's going to take decades to move us out of it in a reasonable way to financially manage. But I think it's time to do this. I think it's time. And at no point do we assume that anybody who lives on a private road is going to say, "Yes, I want you to do this." We've got to go out there with extensive public interaction and talk with our public and have them understand what we're doing and make sure that they agree with us proceeding this way, okay, on private roads. The collector roads, I think, are a little bit different because it isn't just the people who live there. I mean, everybody drives on, you know, Flint Street. Or, you know, you think they're public, and they're not. Okay? So I think that's a little bit of a different scenario, but definitely that last category of all the others, yeah, we've got to, we're going to have to go in and talk with these neighborhoods and make sure that that's what they want. And then if they don't, we come back and talk to you and say they don't want it. Do we all agree that we're not going to proceed with this at this time? We'll put it at the bottom of the list. And that would be a simple way that we might go forward with this. This won't be simple. This will get very complicated, believe me. Another future discussion would be, okay, so we get going on this, and you give us the affirmative nod, but a private road that is in all the other categories says, "You know what? We don't want to wait 10, 15 years. We want to make the investment through the temporary repair to private road program, which would advance us to being taken now, and then we don't worry about it anymore." That would be another discussion we would want to have with you. That was actually the recommendation of the 1998 roads committee. And if you want to see those books, I can get them for you. I still have them. '96 and '98. Excellent recommendations. You'll be, you'll just shake your head when you see the dollar amount, so it would have cost versus where we are today. So, I guess everything goes up. Big discussion we're going to need to have is what road design standards should be applied to the existing private roads in Barnstable that don't meet road design standards. You can drive around Osterville or Cotuit or go out to Lakewaket area. People love that quiet country feel. The wider the road and the more, well, we talk about Lincoln Road all the time, you know, the more pavement, the more speeding, the more issues that we have. So our residents very much want to keep that feel that our, you know, that uniqueness that our roadways have. But I can tell you, Dan Santos will say to me, "Mark, you know, we have the road design standards. We have them if you're building a new road that you have to follow in our subdivision standards. So how are we going to deal with those? What's the practical way to manage this?" We're going to have to have that discussion. I'm not ready to even begin that right now. And then, I would love this evening for you to get, and we can bring this back with a resolve or whatever legal advises, but I would very much like for you to say, "You know what? Any new road that's created is part of a subdivision, and we don't have them very often. But it will be accepted. It'll be held to being constructed as per those standards I referred to, and then you will bring it through the layout and acceptance process here forward." And that way, I can communicate that to our planning department, and that's the way they proceed with these. So we don't put more private roads into our inventory. Okay? Plus, it'd be a new road. So that's the time, if you're going to get an asset, to want to put it in your inventory because it requires the least amount of maintenance. And hopefully, if managed, you've got 20-plus years of life before anything major has to occur to it. So, that's my workshop. I go back to this slide because I think it's important that many of you are new councilors. And though I'm sure if you, you know, you live in town, you must have heard about private roads in your discussions with your constituents. But I very much need guidance on this. So, I'll stop here. Thank you.
Questions? Comments? Counselor Blum.
Yes, Mr. Ells. Would you mind going back to the slide that showed the special fund in the 44 roads? Yeah, that's the one. Okay. I'm not really sure what this says. We have 44 roads right now that are identified, and we have a fund that has $20 million in it. And will that $20 million cover those 44 roads?
I can't answer your question. The fund was originally created in anticipation of the implementation of the Comprehensive Waste Water Management Plan, and it was to be used toward those costs. We have been putting money into that fund for that purpose. In 2014, the roads, the town council roads committee came forward to the council. The council agreed that they should expand that fund to include, wasn't the 44 roads. It was to include these collector, primary roads in our community that are private. Because when we go out there to make an improvement on a roadway that all of us use every day, and then we realize we can't spend the money on it because it's not a public road, that's a problem. So, there was no, the dollar amount is an accruing amount based on the source of the funding. Mark Milne's here, so if you want him to give you more information on that, you can certainly do it. The 44 roads is based on our engineering department looking at the criteria for eligibility to spend these specific funds on a type of private road. Because you can imagine, there's 1,100 of them in the town, so everybody would want to use this money for that road. And that was not the intent of this. It was for these roads that are, I mean, if I read through them, you know, with you, Nye Road, Prince Hinkley Roads, you know, Banfield, you know, Santuit Road, Mary Dunn Road. These are major roadways in our community that we can't go out there and make the types of improvements that we would, let's say, on a Main Street Centerville. We can't do that. So that's what this is. And I understand why the council did what they did. But I also think now there's a different potential discussion here, which is, back then, they weren't looking to take these roads. I don't know that that was a rec, I don't think, was anybody on the council back then? I don't think so. They really weren't looking to lay out and accept then. But I think it's time that we consider doing this and just know that it's all going to be over time. It's not going to be a one or two or four year. This is probably a multi-decade effort to do. Okay? Is that the answer?
Yes, thank you very much.
Counselor Tamish.
Couple of things. You talked about the Stewart Creek and the past sewer projects. Were those roads brought up to current standards, or were they just repaved and they happened to have sewerage?
I'd have to go back and look. I believe that they were resurfaced. So, we didn't go in there and apply these regulations that we have relevant to the construction of a road. No.
Okay.
Yeah.
The roads that, the $20 million that's potentially available, and roads was added to the sewer fund, just as a point of information, is that money that Mark Milne is kind of counting on to pay for the sewers?
I'd ask Mark to come up too.
Or is it kind of in play, so to speak?
Well, nothing's in play with the costs we're looking at of wastewater.
Right.
Yeah, honestly, but.
It's a drop in the bucket, really, right?
Good evening. Yes, Counselor, it is. It's a drop in a bucket. I've been banking that, creating those funds in knowing that we are going to come to the day where we have many loans outstanding, and we're going to need to use that money to make the annual loan payments. And that's really what I've been targeting that fund for. I haven't been putting anything aside for future private road repairs. I've been dedicating it, directing it towards that sewer expansion program.
To me, that makes sense, to look at another source of funding, whatever that is, perhaps a road fund. And lastly, the temporary repairs to roads, you said, Mark, those are in varying states of repair in that, you know, perhaps they weren't all brought up to code. There were less than complete rebuilds. Would it make sense for any further temporary repairs to roads to require they be brought up to standard and say, "Once they're brought up to standard, we're going to accept them"?
I think we need to have one of those last slide discussions because there are many roads in our community that don't meet those standards. And to try to overlay what would be required today if they built a brand-new road on a vacant piece of land is going to be really difficult. So, I think that, I think that we would want to come back to you with something that's safe and practical, and we would want to look at what has been done and advise you whether we think, "Yeah, we can proceed with the taking of this." That is what we would have done, you know, had we been repaving that roadway. So.
I would think that some of these roads, because of the residents, they have liens on their property, and they've chosen to pay out of their own pockets, independent of their taxes, to have the roads repaired, that those would have some kind of a priority.
I think that the 23 should be considered for taking. Yes, I would agree with you. I would agree with you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other comments, questions? Counsel Lucky?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. You mentioned earlier in your presentation, Mark, that the taxes are the same regardless if you're on, that just seems grossly unfair that people on these private roads, I can just only speak for my precinct since I've walked most of them. I mean, some of them are just awful, beyond awful. And it, I don't know, it just seems like maybe a point of discussion. How is that, that they have to pay the same taxes when they have to pay out to fix their road? I don't know. Is that a decision that we may? I don't know. I did.
It is. It's a policy decision that the legislative body of this town made. So, I don't know from a DOR standpoint. I'd have to ask Mark about.
I mean, I guess, you know, and then, you know, kind of, it would hurt us to not have the revenue to help, you know, in theory, pay for the road repairs should they be taken. But it does seem, it's just curious to me that that is our policy decision.
Well, I think Dan may have a little better. Well, I think Dan may have a little better scenario than mine, but when I was Public Works Director, you know, I think I kept logs of all the complaints I got, and I was getting about three a day, every day, for the 10 years I was Director. So, I mean, you know, I heard regularly from our residents, I talked to them personally, and that was an issue that was always brought up. So, it was also an issue brought before Town Council, and brought to these committees regularly, and the legislative body of this town went in the direction that they did. I don't know that there's anything improper about the way we assess our taxes. Mark?
Thank you, Town Manager Els. So, there is no mechanism in the way we can set a tax rate, different tax rate, for somebody who lives on a private road versus somebody who lives on a public road. Think of it like the residential exemption. We do have, there is a tax policy decision that you make on an annual basis, where you can grant, somebody who lists Barnstable as their primary residence, you can provide them a tax break. Nothing exists under Mass General law that allows you to do something for somebody who lives on a private road. So everybody pays the same taxes at the same rate, whether you live on a private road or a public road in Massachusetts.
So there's absolutely nothing you can do to change that?
No.
Nothing local?
It would take a legislative change, it would have to be general legislation, that the state legislature would have to implement, and talking about a major change to the tax code, very difficult to do.
Okay. And I know that we're not the only municipality that has this problem. I remember going to a conference where many municipalities have this. And my answer to you, Mark, would be, yes, 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 everything. And I agree in terms of the $20 million, but I think we should plan to take all of them. I'm glad we're finally, it sounds like going to make the developers build the roads to standards. I often drive through a fairly new neighborhood, and I look at the road as I'm driving, it's awful already, and it's a fairly new development, I want to say, within the last couple decades, not one of these ones in the 70s and 80s, which is, my precinct is full of those, and those are just dreadful.
We've had those standards in place for a long time, so that, I'd, anytime, let me know that road, and I'll refer it back.
Yeah, let me know the road.
Yeah, please.
I'm curious about it.
Yeah, please.
I won't say it here.
Yeah, no, no, I understand, but please.
Yeah, no, it strikes me as, as I'm carting my kids around to various places. And I think it's smart for you to do the budgeting. I think we need to get a large viewpoint of this. But again, just because it's, what I hear from my constituents, and I see it, it's something I think we owe it to our residents, to give them decent roads, you know, not only for their cars to go on, I mean, people have told me their broken axles and things like that, but, you know, kids to ride bikes and things like that. It's a basic service that I think we owe our people. So I'm a yes across the board.
Counsel Neer.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Mark. This is a sticky one. The deeper you get in, the worse it gets, it's a rabbit hole. My business, it's if I touch it, I own it, so I guess that would kind of go with roads we touch, we, I would think that we should own. But with that said, when folks have a, you know, an additional tax burden, so then you get in the conversation of, so do we eliminate that? Do we write it off? Or are they going to keep paying? And then if you're doing the road next door, well, how come he's got to pay it? I don't have to pay. It's kind of like the student loan forgiveness program, right? So, I had to pay. Anyways, finally, I think that, you know, I look at the math on this thing, it's what, $4 million is kind of what, 3.75 in the budget. I mean, this, I wouldn't be surprised if this comes in like 10 or 12 million a year, so you've got to try to find, you know, budgetary cuts somewhere, to the tune of 8 million bucks every year going forward, and then, yeah, multiply that by the inflation rate and all the other stuff, or find an additional area of creating revenue. So it's a big number, just, but it would be good to know, in a general form, what that number may approximately be.
Oh, I don't want to speculate, but the last time we did this exercise, probably a decade ago, we were around for all these 1,100 roads, and, you know, 100, 150-plus million back then, would be the total cost of that improvement. So, I actually believe that back around 2009 or '10, we went out for a debt exclusion vote for private roads and for sewers, and they both failed, because we were saying to our residents, we would proceed with this, and the town, at the time, thought, really, it was much the same discussion that you're having, which is, yeah, this sounds good, but we're taking on a tremendous financial, it has tremendous financial impact over the life of the program, and how are we going to do this financially?
And just as a follow-up, on another note, when the roads, there are some roads in my precinct that are just, I mean, they're almost safety, you know, related. It does affect the value of your tax dollar, too. I mean, you know, if you've got a nicely paved road, and things are looking great, it does make a big difference when it comes down to the real estate agent trying to sell you a place, and the assessing office applying, so. In effect, you got a discount, but you know, I think I'd trade the discount for that, you know, the pothole that gives you a flat every third week, you know, food for thought anyways.
Counsel Starr.
Thank you. My question is about the, the first one, the CWMP. Are you saying that right now, you go in and you get easements, and then we put the sewers in, and then we take the road?
I am recommending that we.
Take the road first.
Would, I am, I am, we're going to have to run it concurrent, because it's going to take a while to lay out and accept, but if the council says to me, we want to get into the business of taking these roads once you've resurfaced them, well, to put the sewer in and resurface, then DPW would prepare, but leading, and so let's say that takes 18 months to be able to bring in the first laid-out road for acceptance. In the meantime, we're going to be doing a lot of sewer expansion, so we're going to be bringing in easements to you. We have to, or else we won't get the SRF money. So, we're going to be running both concurrent, but then ultimately, we would, at some point, anything we bring in would be laid out and accepted, and then we're going to have to go back to all the ones we've already done, and we're going to have to bring in the layout and acceptance to you, and maintain them from there forward.
But eventually, you get ahead of it.
Eventually, you'll catch up.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know, it'll be a while before we ever get ahead of this one. But on the other hand, I've been here for 30 years, and one of the first committees I sat, I've been here 34 years, and one of the first committees I sat on was the Private Roads Committee, so we really haven't made a comprehensive decision relevant to this in that timeframe.
So it's your fault that there's no policy? You could have fixed it then.
It is my fault, yes. Thank you.
Just checking.
Thank you.
One quick follow-up, the 44 roads, the connector roads, so we're going to do, the CIP has two for next year, or the 25. So do you plan to not use the 20 million? You want to keep the 20 million sort of separate, and just out of the.
Well, the 20 million is separate, and right now, it's equated into the CWMP, but if we start using it for private roads, like I'm proposing this year, we're going to start to use it. It's $1.52 million is the estimate for those two roads. That means if it's 20 million, you know, we're going to have $18.5 million available after we do that for sewers, rather than, you know what I mean? So, it's really a question of, and it was a council policy to go in that direction, and I understand why they did it, because we had these major roadways without a funding source that were private, that were reaching the end of their useful life and needed to be improved. And so that's why they did what they did. I completely understand. But, you know, we know the enormity of what we're undertaking with our sewer expansion, so.
So, I got confused, I thought you were taking the 44 roads, the connector roads money, and trying to leave the 20 million alone, and just put it into the regular budget somewhere?
No. No, it's, no, you can't.
Okay.
It's a specific fund that the legislature allowed us to create for sewers.
Okay.
Yes. With a designated revenue source.
Okay.
Counsel Crowe.
Mark, just a quick history lesson.
Yes, sir.
We have private roads, because these neighborhoods were developed by a developer, okay, and the developer decided not to spend the money to pave the road. Is that correct?
No. We had, we, the legislative body of the town, so the developer came in, went through the process to receive approval from the planning board to create a subdivision with a roadway, or roadways in it. We had standards, we've had standards for decades on what road design should be. So, I'll assume that it was done as per that, whatever that design was at the time. When that was done, at some point in time, the town stopped, and I, you'd have to go back to the original town meetings to figure out why the legislative body said, we're not taking roads anymore. These will remain private roads. So if in 1972, they built the subdivision you live in, and it was just standard at the time, maintenance and capital improvement, when you get down the line, was left to the people who live on the road. Now, when people move in, they don't, now they can go on our website and go under Property lookup, and you can see if you live on a public and private road. But that was recent, that we've done that. And it was because of the condition of many of these roads from the 70s or the 80s have reached the end of their useful life, and residents were calling us wanting to see an improvement, and we were saying to them, you live on a private road, we can't invest public dollars into this. So, that's how that's evolved.
Okay. There's just one example I think of, I think it's in Marshalls Mills, it's up near the rotary there by the airport, the old airport, I think it was Willamantic or something, it looks like that road had never been paved, it just was dirt from the beginning. How is that possible?
I would have to go back in the history of that, and see when it was developed and what it was. Yeah, I think that's right. I mean, I fished over at Sewell's Pond, and I think, I think it was, but that may be 40, and sometimes, if you don't maintain your drainage, even if it's there, drainage will destroy a road terribly. The other thing that I'll note to you on this, is that when we look at the more difficult roads and the complaint-ridden roads that we have during snow and ice, many times, the roads that are very difficult to plow are our private roads, because they're not in very good shape, and it allows all sorts of other challenges when, you know, when we have a tough snow and ice year. So, and then, that further complicates it, because snow and ice destroys roads. So, yeah, this isn't a great way to manage one of, I mean, again, I start by saying that we're one of the largest roadway systems in Massachusetts, because we are, and almost half of it is private. So, it's significant for us.
Can I ask my question? And it's getting late, but I just wanted to say, that sort of changes my outlook on what we're talking about here, because at one time, those roads were in good shape, and the town decided not to take them up.
The legislative body of the town. So it would have been town meeting originally.
So it is unfair to the people who live on that, on those roads, considering. Okay, thanks.
Yes, sir.
Counsel Ovech.
Thank you. To Counselor Crowe's point, so, and that's in my precinct, and Willamantic is a, so, what's happening, too, around these bodies of water? So you have a lot of rental properties, and a lot of the renters, because it takes 51%, they're not motivated necessarily, right, to improve the roads, and their roads and their bad drainage is right on the border of these ponds, lakes, estuaries, and therefore, without, with poor drainage, you're getting the salt, the sphoseris, the, all that going into the ponds, the contamination, so there is, and again, without the proper drainage and filtration, you're not, you're not getting what you need in that, and again, that's going into, and then you just get one, you know, the DPW will come in, fill the hole, do what they can, and then one storm, and then, poof, there it goes, right into the pond. So, you know, it is an issue. And now, obviously, being around the number of different workshops that we've done on this, working with Mark, getting this kind of out in the priority, probably, and, you know, I'll take blame for it, we probably should have had a resolve by now, quite honestly, so that maybe there was clearer direction, but at this point, the first one, the CWMP, technically, that's not going to cost us a lot of money, because those roads are going to get paved as part of the sewer project. So that's not going to be like money we necessarily have to budget, it's just going to be something that's going to have to be forecasted out in the future. And if I'm being Captain Obvious, that's, you know, but the allowable and the special legislation, now that's going to cost us some money if we're not going to use the $20 million. We need to make that decision relatively quick, because School Street, that's coming up, that CIP's coming up in April, so. And then, further down, we have the temporary roads repair now, full disclosure, I'm not only a counselor, I'm also a client. This happened on Wheeler Road. I thought that maybe that's what you were going to say, Counsel Crowe, because that's, I'm right near that same rotary. So, and that happened. Now, I am paying an assessment every year for that, and it's quite substantial, and the, you know, I will continue to pay that assessment. When the road's taken, I don't think I'm not going to pay that assessment anymore, so I don't think anybody else thinks that either. It's just that, moving forward, even after our assessment's paid, then the road would take, maybe, you know, again, you'd have to assess each one individually, I guess, is what you're saying, those could be taken. Again, not to much cost of the town, because again, it's future forecasting. So really, the only one that we really kind of need to make a decision on, because it's money at stake that's going towards our sewer program, is number two, the allowable and special legislation. And then all others, again, something where we systematically make a plan moving forward. So, I say that, you know, if anything, maybe we get something for the second point right away, as far as a resolve, and then the other ones, we just kind of give you direction, and you can give a budget forecast, maybe?
Absolutely, and I think part of the budget forecast, we could certainly, you know, use our Comprehensive Financial Advisory Committee in combination with our Finance Director to come back to us, not unlike what we've done with our sewer discussion, and talk about, how, what's the best way to fund this? How do we, how do we move this forward? Because this is a significant asset, and it has significant cost. And so, I expect us to be talking about this here forward actively. The only way we wouldn't is if you said, I'm going to go sit with Counsel Ovech, because if you said, no, 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 not, yes, 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 yes. I expect that we will be having regular discussions as we progress with this.
I mean.
Yeah.
Every six months is what I'm thinking.
We need numbers and details before we can say yes and no, I think.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Counsel Schlepp.
Well, given that we will be probably considering a debt override sometime in our near future, I mean, I think this is timely, because roads might be something that we work in, into the financing of, you know, the big infrastructure costs that we have before us.
I think it's, would have to be part of a discussion. It's not, the private roads that aren't part of the CWMP, aren't part of that discussion right now. So, based on what our council president said, we will continue to bring in requests for easements as we bring forward sewer expansion. We will begin to organize a, you know, a financial presentation, I'll try to break it up into these four categories. I think the last one will be tough right now, because we don't have much information on many of these roads. But we will try to organize this in a way to bring this back to you, probably by summer, and that would be my hope, but I'll keep you advised as to how we progress. And, it was really the reason why I requested the workshop right now, you do have these two roads in the CIP this year, that if we proceed as proposed, we would be using that fund, that stabilization fund for sewer and collector-type private roads, to fund those two.
We don't have a choice, do we?
The choice would be for you to say, Mark, we want to move forward in that category with not using it for collector-private roads. We want you to do the layout and acceptance, and once we accept it, it will be rolled into the public road inventory, and then you will program it for CIP funds in the future as a public road. So that's, that's really, I wanted to have that discussion in a workshop, because if I tried to explain. because if I tried to explain this at budget time without giving you this full picture, I think you would be not able to make the same decision that you might if you had the benefit of this sort of discussion.
Thank you.
Yes.
Can I get a clarification on that? If we don't proceed as it's currently funded, is that gonna delay the process? Because you're gonna have to pull it out, do layout acceptance?
I'd have to talk to Dan Santos about how long it would take to lay out and accept the roads. And much of it will depend on what we find when we research the ownership of the roads, quite honestly. Sometimes, it can be complicated. If it isn't, then, you know, it may slip the schedule slightly.
But would you have to pull it out of the CIP if you're going in that direction?
My recommendation would be, we would come in for funding to do the layout and the acceptance. Yeah. It would be a different request. And we can do that supplemental. I wouldn't suggest deferring it to next year. My recommendation would be that I would have DPW quantify that. And we would withdraw as proposed and we would bring in a supplemental. I don't know if it can coincide with budget at this point. But we would bring in a supplemental to lay out and accept, and we would proceed with that.
Counselor Ovech.
President Pence, could we move forward with that? Process?
Yeah, I think he wants to. You wanna vote on this right now?
Or just maybe in the next meeting?
Why don't I, why don't we?
What do you need us to do in other words?